Okay, good evening. Let the record reflect that the special meeting direction was given to staff. So I'm gonna go ahead and welcome everyone this evening for this evening's city council meeting. This is a meeting of... Get my paperwork here. Sorry, everybody. Okay, I'd like to call to order a roll call and welcome everyone to this evening's meeting, January 22nd, 2018. Please be courteous and turn off your cellphone, or at least turn it on silent, and let the record reflect that all city council members are present tonight, and we're gonna begin with the pledge allegiance. Okay, so we are now gonna look at the agenda for this evening, and I would like to ask if there's any requests for changes to tonight's agenda?
Do you not want to move for approval of the agenda?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we are now in line for approving of the minutes, and I would just like to call everyone's attention to the December 5th, 2017 City Council Planning Commission Joint Special Meeting Minutes, and I'd like to hear a motion now to approve those December 5th minutes.
Mayor, I needed abstain, I was not at that meeting, so I'll abstain from that.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It clearly passes. Alright, we're now on to announcements and presentations, and I'd like to move the first item. It's a proclamation that's recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Santa Rosa Junior College, and I believe we may have a couple representatives from the JC here tonight, so please, if you would, I'm gonna go ahead and read this special proclamation for this evening's event. So this is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Hillsburg, recognizing the 100th anniversary of the junior college, Santa Rosa Junior College. Whereas Santa Rosa Junior College was originally conceived in 1917, November 1917, by the Federated Home and School Association, an organization of prominent Santa Rosa women who cherish the ethos of locally-based higher education. And whereas Santa Rosa JC was chartered in California, enrolling 19 students to its first semester into the spring of 1918, eventually grew to include all high school districts located in Sonoma County and parts of Marin and Mendocino Counties by July 1963, and to date has served over 1,700,000 students, preparing each one for regional, national, and global leadership. And whereas Sonoma County's JC College District, well-known as Santa Rosa Junior College, is celebrating its 100th anniversary in January of 2018, and whereas Santa Rosa Junior College has established comprehensive campuses in Santa Rosa, Petaluma, along with the Public Safety Training Center in Windsor, a 365-acre shown farm in Forestville, the Southwest Santa Rosa Center in Roseland, classroom-based instruction throughout the district, and an online program that serves students from throughout the region and beyond. And whereas having instituted a legacy of excellence during a century of service, Santa Rosa Junior College has established academic, career, technical education, athletic and performing arts programs that have consistently garnered state, national, and worldwide attention, bringing honor to the college and community. And whereas it is the adopted vision that Santa Rosa Junior College aspires to be an inclusive, diverse, and sustainable learning community that engages the whole person, a statement that genuinely reflects the legacy of its imprint on the entire North Bay region, a vision guarded vigorously throughout the test of time, and, almost done here, whereas the distribution of funds to support students in educational programs has earned the JC Foundation the number-one ranking among all California community colleges, and recognition amongst the top in the nation. And whereas the Junior College Student Services and the Frank P. Doyle and Polly O'Meara Doyle scholarships are acknowledged as among the finest in the California community college system. And whereas the faculty, staff, administrators, and student leaders have vowed to ensure collegiality and harmony in order to cultivate creativity, respect, health, and inherent richness of a multicultural community, therefore it proclaimed that the city council of this body, the city of Hillsburg, hereby recognizes the 100th anniversary of Santa Rosa Junior College. We commend you, the institution, for its role in promoting educational opportunity, academic excellence, economic vitality, social equity, and community advancement throughout the North Bay, and invites the entire community to revel and participate in the 100th anniversary celebrations. It's my pleasure to read that as a public school teacher, one who sends my students to you, so thank you so much. And who do we have here? I just wanna know before we... Okay, so you need to push the button, and we wanna hear your voice for sure.
Oh, there we go. That works. My name's Michelle Poggi, I'm the Director of Student Outreach at SRJC, and I have my colleague Luz Navarrete Garcia, our faculty in the ESL Department. I'd like to just, Mayor Mansell and the city council, oh wonderful. So, and community members of the city of Hillsburg, on behalf of Luz and myself, and of course, are the Santa Rosa Junior College Board of Trustees, and Dr. Frank Chung, our college president, thank you very much for the proclamation, and we just want to acknowledge our long history with the city of Hillsburg, and specifically 50 years with the Hillsburg School District, we're very excited about that, and express our deep gratitude for our partnership and collaboration over the years. You may or may not know that some of the initial motivation for the junior college movement 100 years ago was to address the concerns of parents and the community regarding access to public higher education. At that time UC Berkeley and only a few other private universities existed to serve the people of California. UCLA was originally a junior college, representing Southern California, at the same time SRJC was formed to serve the Redwood Empire. The rest is history, as they say, and SRJC has been dedicated to providing access to higher education, exceptional higher education, ever since. So we thank you again for the proclamation, and we're excited to see where the next 100 years takes us. I think Luz has a question for you.
If I may, hi, my name is Luz, and I'm a Hillsburgian. I've grown up here, lived here, taught here, worked here, and now I'm fortunate to be able to work at the JC, and I love being able to be part of the Hillsburg community and the JC family, and I just wanted to ask everyone in attendance, if you have ever taken any class at Santa Rosa Junior College, if you could please stand. I think that just shows the impact that Santa Rosa Junior College has had on our community in Hillsburg, and it is like this in every community in Sonoma County, so we're very proud of this, and we really appreciate your proclamation. I'd also just like to mention, recently with all of the fires and with everything that happened this fall, I do believe that many, many of our first responders locally have been trained through Santa Rosa Junior College Public Safety Training, and I believe if we were to look in our city of Hillsburg rosters, our employees, probably many have gone through public safety training, or maybe post-training through Santa Rosa Junior College as well, and so we're happy to contribute to our community in that way. Thank you.
And thank you both so much for being here, and please accept our proclamation, and also I will be attending on Wednesday evening to represent...
Yes, we've already made notes.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the good work. 100 years is definitely worth celebrating and looking at and understanding that this is a legacy. Thank you. Continue to grow stronger. Alright, and then our second proclamation is my pleasure also to read. It's a proclamation for the service of our Public Works Director, Brent Salmy. So is he here tonight?
Mayor Mansell, I could just interject?
Yes, please.
The proclamation you're going to read is not real wordy, and that is in recognition of Mr. Salmy's economical use of the written language. So as you will see, many proclamations can go on, this proclamation hopefully in celebration of Mr. Salmy will represent his mastery of the written word.
So with that in mind, I'd sure like to be able to see him, but Mr. Director Crowley is in the way, and if I'm gonna read this, I have to have eye contact with the recipient. Thank you. I think you should stand up, Director Salmy. I do. At least a front-row material? Okay, okay, well then Crowley's just gonna have to... Okay, so this is for you, Director Salmy. Okay. "A proclamation of the city council of the city of Hillsburg, recognizing Public Works Director Brent Salmy on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Brent Salmy began his employment with the city of Hillsburg on January 13th, 2014, as Public Works Director and City Engineer, whereas during his entire tenure with the city of Hillsburg, Mr. Salmy has been known as 'a man of few words.' And whereas in the following, Mr. Salmy's concise style of communication, the city of Hillsburg would like to highlight his greatest achievements and expertise. Brent Salmy rebuilds bridges. Brent Salmy takes care of trash. Brent Salmy makes roads pretty. Brent Salmy makes lights turn from red to green. Brent Salmy makes everything go down the drain. And whereas with Brent being a man of very little words, over the last few years, we were only able to discern that he likes chocolate chip cookies and old cars. And whereas for a man of few words, Brent is leaving the city with a big unfinished project that will require a lot of words to complete. And whereas Brent will retire from the city of Hillsburg on February 2nd, 2018, and whereas the city staff will miss Brent's few words at council meetings and management staff meetings. And whereas in all seriousness, Brent has been an incredible asset for the city with his common-sense approach to very complex projects. And whereas all who have worked with Brent wish him all the best in his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Hillsburg hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks to Brent Salmy for his exemplary and dedicated service to the city of Hillsburg and its citizens, and extends its best wishes to him and his family for a long and happy retirement. Thank you very much, Director Salmy, for your service." So if you'd like to come receive it.
Okay. Yeah, just, it's been a lot of fun. Part of the reason why I took the job in the first place was there was a lot of projects that had interest. It's been nice to work with all the residents, to work with the council, and to work with all the staff, and I really appreciate the camaraderie I've had, and like I said, the work I was able to do. Thank you.
It's more than words that we can express, but those are the words. Thank you. So going, moving on to an agenda that has many words, we are going to continue with the council reports on matters of interest occurring since our previous meeting, and also talk about expense reimbursement reports. The reason I bring that up is because I did go to an event that the city paid for, so I need to share a little bit, and I think that's the purpose of this. So I'd like to start, if possible, with Councilman McCaffrey. Would you like to begin?
Yeah, on the 12th, I had a conference call with the city manager, Sergeant Casaneda, and BJ Thompson, a consultant out of Sonoma about, we were talking about homeless services, and I believe that based on that, the city manager is gonna come to us with a proposal for, in the near future, to look at a strategic plan and kind of bring all the partners together and all the stakeholders to come up with short, medium, and long-term plans for addressing homeless issues in the city of Hillsburg in the North County. So I'm really excited about that. Both of us have been working on this issue together, and I've really seen it moving forward, and we're making some progress here. Then on the 17th, I had my first oversight board meeting, where we approved the ROPS, Redevelopment Obligation Payment Schedule, and it took all of seven minutes, I think, and it was great, and I'm the chair now, so we'll try to get that down to about three minutes. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Who would like to go next? Cool?
Yes, I attended a meeting of the Hillsburg Tourism Improvement District. Their main business was their promotion plan for the year, which is, you know, the main thing that they're concerned about, but they did also hand over a check for $10,000 to the Hillsburg Jazz Festival, and so that's coming out of the district improvement funds that we designated at a prior council meeting. So I just wanna mention that we are still looking for a public member of the advisory subcommittee on how to spend the district improvement funds. So if anyone is interested in participating in that way, the only requirement is that you live in the city limits of Hillsburg, and details for application are on the Chamber of Commerce website, hillsburg.com, under the Employment tab, for some reason, and the deadline for application is February 1. The other interesting meeting I had was with the Sonoma County Regional Parks Director, Burke Whitaker. It was basically just a getting acquainted kind of meeting, and it was interesting, I didn't realize he had such roots in Hillsburg, that he used to live on the river on the other side of Fitch Mountain, and his first job for the Sonoma County Parks was as a lifeguard at Memorial Beach in 1995. That was interesting. So we just talked a lot about new recreational issues that we have here in Hillsburg, and I talked about my particular interest in trying to develop safe off-road bike paths in our beautiful valleys, and he's very interested in that also, although currently, the project that they are working on and funding is a bike path from Forestville to the ocean, which sounds pretty fabulous, too, but they are gonna do a master plan of bike paths along the river in the future, and so we hope we can make some progress with that for our region.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items of interest. First, I met yesterday morning with Bob Bjorkquist, owner of Dry Creek Firearms, to discuss this forthcoming agenda item for tonight. The second item of interest was my trip with Councilmember Vice Mayor Hagley to the NCPA Strategic Issues Conference. This is my, as an alternate, this is my introduction to the various nuances of what the NCPA does, and the importance of learning these nuances, and, you know, I came out of that meeting with a few feelings. First of all, I'm super impressed by what the NCPA does and the value that it brings to Hillsburg. And also, by the way, their 50th anniversary, so they've been around for a while, too. But also an appreciation for what Vice Mayor Hagley does. I just wanna say thank you, because that's a lot of work that you do, over and above what we do here. So hats off, and I'm proud to serve as your alternate, and looking forward to, you know, seeing what else comes with that.
Thank you, Councilman Neokis. Okay, Vice Mayor Hagley.
Yeah, a couple of things. Yes, as Councilmember Neokis mentioned, we were up in Sacramento at the NCPA 101 Conference with the overview. One of the great things about these kind of conferences, you do get to know your fellow council members, and I do have to point this out, so we all go to dinner, and it's kind of nice after the formalities, to sit with the other member cities, and you're having dinner, kind of joking around, and, you know, the usual small talk, what's the big issue in your town, is that? And there was a guy that did the tech presentation at the NCPA 101, and I can't remember his name, but tell me that's right. And so Councilmember Neokis was sitting next to him, and then they started talking tech, and these two guys lit up like little kids talking baseball. I really didn't understand what they were discussing, but it was pretty fun to watch. Anyway, we also had the Director of Cal Fire come and talk, Ken Pimlot, and he talked about, you know, the impacts of the fires on the state of California, and specifically how it relates to some of the impacts related to NCPA. I had the honor of introducing Senator Mike McGuire as keynote speaker, one of the keynote speakers, and then at the end of the month, next week, actually, I'll be heading back up to Sacramento for Capitol Days, where we'll have our meeting on what our strategic issues are gonna be for the next year, with any legislation that's coming down the pipeline, and we'll be meeting with our senators and assemblymen to try to lay the groundwork on what's important to nonprofit utilities, like our small little town of Hillsburg. Let's see, and then the week before that, I was at a, I went up to the NCRRA meeting up in Eureka. Beautiful drive. We have some interesting things going on with NCRRA, and just starting to become government now, I'm like talking to these, yeah, North Coast Railroad Authority. So I'm one of the directors representing Sonoma County, and we have a new director. I have not had a chance to meet with her, I think she'll be in attendance at our meeting in March, is Carol Hart, who's the former Parks Director for Sonoma County. And the NCRRA is making a presentation to the California Transportation Commission at the end of this month, I believe on the 29th. They were basically requesting, hey, come to us with either a business plan or a shutdown plan, and so we presented, we're gonna be presenting a strategic plan. I was also appointed to the SMART and NCRRA Coordination Committee, as well as the Strategic Plan Committee, and then reappointed to the Property Committee, so I'm pretty involved in that, and that's pretty much my report at this point. There will be more coming down the line on NCRRA, I would say probably within the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'm gonna put on my badge, because I went to the California League of Cities New Mayor and New Council Person's Academy. I was the only member here that went. I was there three years ago in my first year, and I went this year, it was the 17th through the 19th, so I went to Sacramento, and it was a good academy. I went to every single session that I could go to, and I learned a lot. So I know there's, I just wanna say, I'm rejuvenated to talk about budget, I'm interested in talking about pensions, I'm interested in getting out of the hole with pensions. I did learn a lot about the new communications, specifically, one of the sessions I went to was regarding what's happening with communication in the new media, and I'm thinking about Facebook in a different way. We have our small-town Facebook interactions, and they, you know, it wasn't a fear-based discussion, but it definitely pushed my thinking about just making light comments on media and finding that it may or may not be the best way to go, and I just learned a lot about just different issues that we, as council members, should know: legal powers and obligations, land use planning, communication in the new media, city of dysfunction junction, they demonstrate a dysfunctional council meeting at lunchtime, you probably remember that when you went here one time, and then financial responsibility, city revenues, as I mentioned, the budget. So I took a lot of notes, I framed a lot of questions, I came up with some quotes, I wrote about it in my journal. I did meet on a one-on-one with State Senator McGuire about housing. There is a whole new set of laws that are having to do with housing in California. So I did get the guide to new housing law in California, and there's some exciting prospects, I think. I certainly think that at the state level, there's a lot of movement with our governor going out, and, you know, a new governor coming in, and I know that people are excited about different aspects of that, but I think overall what I gained was just a better understanding of my responsibility to assure that when a conversation happens or decisions happen, that they're made in front of people, and that we don't violate that Brown Act, which I think is really important when we look at making decisions and spending money and changing policies. I really appreciated being included in the Northern California Power Agency Dinner, so I took a little cab ride over from my hotel over, it wasn't that far, met a really nice cab guy, by the way, Pakistani man, wonderful guy, learned a lot. But anyway, I did go over to the meeting that you guys had, and actually interfaced with the California, or the Northern California Power Agency, and got my PIN, which doesn't sound like you got a PIN, and I did, so I'm gonna give you my PIN symbolically, because you're the alternate, I just kind of showed up for dinner, and it was a good, it was good, a lot of men, have to say, a lot of male energy, which is fine, but I just want you to know, most people that represent in that particular group, it seems to be a lot of blue and black suits. I enjoyed it, I did learn a lot, and I definitely appreciated being included, so thank you, Vice Mayor, for saying, "Come on over." I did. I think what I would say overall, though, is just paying attention to our, to get renewal once in a while when you get on this council and you learn some of the policy aspects, and also what's going on with lobbying for cities. So I did enjoy it, and I also learned a lot, and I'm hoping I can continue to do a good job representing the people of Hillsburg, but also looking at it from the angle of the law, and also doing better job making decisions with money, that is, tax dollars. So that's what I got out of that. I also spent some time interviewing, you're gonna find out, Parks and Rec candidates. I've received a lot of emails about the issue that we're gonna have a public meeting on tonight, and I also engaged in the Martin Luther King Holiday, as well as the Women's March on Saturday in San Francisco. So anyway, that's my report, but I did gain a lot from going to the conference or the academy, and I feel better for going, so. So with that in mind, I opened our reports out, and moved to the next item on the agenda, which is the city manager report. And this evening, we have a report from our city manager from the Police Department, and I wasn't sure if this council wanted to open it for a finite number of questions, or if we just wanna do the report. Is there any thought about that, or do you wanna just do the report? Okay, typically no questions, says former Mayor McCaffrey, so I'm gonna go with that. Okay, so we will now let the record reflect that we are going to begin the city manager report with no questions from the public.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this is our annual Police Department update report. I'm gonna throw a lot of various data at you, but the idea is to just kind of give you a snapshot of the last 12 months. Obviously, you know a lot about what's going on with our Police Department and the city in terms of big items that we all hear about, but this is to just kind of give you a recap of some of the things that we don't talk about regularly here at city council meetings. So to start, we'll just kind of do an overview of staffing. The city council has authorized 18 sworn police officer positions. Currently, they're all filled. All of our officers are off of field training, that's somewhat recent. We have done a fair amount of hiring in the last three years, so everybody's now through training, so all of those officers are in the field, although we do have one injured police officer who isn't working currently. So one of the things I've come to accept, it's rare when you have full staff and everybody healthy, and it just seems to be the case. So right now, we have one officer out injured. Dispatch, the council has authorized six dispatcher positions. We have five filled, we've had some difficulty filling that sixth position. We recently had the trainee virtually complete their training program and then resign for personal reasons, so that position is once again vacant. So we're gonna be making efforts to fill that right away, because it does put quite a bit of stress on our dispatchers when we don't have all six. Response time, one measure of a police department to kind of see how they're doing, when somebody picks up the phone and calls the police, it's important to kind of look at how long it takes us to get there. So we have great software that allows us to answer that question pretty precisely. I'll start by defining priority one calls. You see that we break it down by our priority one calls, and then all other calls for service. Priority one calls are calls that involve some sort of threat to human life, or significant property, or are in progress, versus something that's already occurred where the suspect has left. So as you can see, our priority one calls are down under four minutes, roughly just over three minutes. So if you call the police department with some sort of emergency, you'll have a police car at your location on average in about three minutes, and that's down significantly from 2012. And you can see the calls for service response time in minutes deviates and coincides roughly with how our staffing has been. If you go back to when we were shorter-staffed and we're having a lot of difficulty filling sworn positions, and during the recession, you can see, particularly with non-emergency calls for service, how much higher those were, over 10 minutes in some cases. calls for service, how much higher those were, over 10 minutes in some cases. Because in a small town, a lot of the calls that we get are not emergencies, but we want to be able to respond to those fairly quickly. So I'm happy to report, now that we've reached full staffing and everybody's off training, there's been a significant drop in all other calls for service beyond our emergency calls. So that's down to just over four minutes, and we're pretty, pretty happy with that. So if you call the police for something that's not an emergency, you're still going to have a car pretty quickly. Crime rates, the major crimes, murder, rape, robbery, those are pretty flat. We don't get a lot of crime like that here in Healdsburg. But as you can see, some of the other crimes, in particular property crimes, are trending toward the, toward increases. We don't know where that's going to go. In talking to fellow police chiefs and then looking at some of the data throughout the state, in particular, stolen vehicles are on the increase on a statewide level. You see, the top one is our larceny, which is basically theft. And that could be anything from somebody going into a car and ransacking it to shoplifting. We've seen some pretty significant spikes in theft. And as an observation, I would point out again, I don't know, there's been no peer-reviewed studies on what the impacts of changes in state law have been on these crime rates, but I will point out that some of the most recent propositions, which have significantly reduced the penalties associated with theft, occurred, you know, coincidentally with this. So I can't say for sure, but I think I should point out that that did occur recently, and you do see an increase in theft at the same time. So again, there's no actual studies yet that can support the relationship between those two, but it does seem that they might be related. Calls for service are trending toward the uptick. We've had a 17.5% increase in calls for service between 2013, 2017. As you see, we break down the calls for service between officer-initiated and those generated when a citizen calls our dispatch center. And we're focusing more tonight on the calls for service when somebody actually telephones. And so there's no doubt, we are busier. The nature of the calls varies. We kind of tried to give you a snapshot of where we spend a lot of our time with this next slide. Some of them are increasing, something, some of them are flat, but it's important to note that we spend a lot of time, for example, almost 600 per year responding to alarms, of which virtually all of them are false alarms. Occasionally, we'll have a valid burglar alarm, but most of the time, they're false. So that's relatively flat, but as you can see, a lot of our calls for service relate to that. Domestic violence is flat, no significant increase there, but we're spending a lot of time with that, as with traffic collisions. Where we're seeing our increases is with suspicious circumstances calls and suspicious vehicles calls. We had significant increases in those categories. Can't say why, but that's when somebody calls to report something that just looks out of place, which is a good thing. We want the community to be vigilant and reporting suspicious activity to us. So I don't think it's a bad thing, but it's clearly occupying our time a little bit more than it has in the past. The last category was quite an increase as well, as you can see, from 600 to over 1,000 in one year, and that's a kind of a broad category, we call 911, and that is, had a lot to do with our increases in calls for service. So what gets categorized there are calls to our dispatch center that are what we call 911 hangups. And if you were to sit in our dispatch center for an hour, you'd just see that that is, when our 911 line rings, more often than not, it's one of these calls where somebody's accidentally dialed on a cell phone, will get GPS coordinates, we are always going to send a police officer to that location. Or it could be a child playing on the phone at a house or just an accidental call from a house. But in each one of those cases, we have to send a police officer just to confirm that there is no actual problem at the location. So that's been quite a big increase in our calls for service. Use of force, definitely trending toward the increase. If you look at from 2015 to 17, they're up almost 100%. We spend a lot of time talking about this at the Police Department in terms of trying to determine why that's the case. Hard to say, other than when you break down the types of encounters that relate to these use of force. 55% of our uses of force involve alcohol-related incidents, either a drunken public arrest or DUI arrest. And another 20% involve domestic violence cases. So 75% of our uses of force are going to involve an intoxicated person or a domestic violence suspect or both. And that is consistent with my entire law enforcement career, those tend to be situations where you're likely, more likely than other incidents to encounter use of force. So for some reason, it's up, but as a percentage, it's saying, staying relatively low. The number we look at in particulars, you've got total number of incidents over 20,000, total number of arrests 637, and only 20 uses of force. I would also point out that where you see the significant increases in use of force aren't with the use of an impact weapon or a strike by the officer or a taser, but as you can see, the big increases with takedowns and control holds. A control hold, it could be an arm bar or a twist lock, wrist lock, something along those lines. A takedown is when a group of officers or one officer uses their body weight to take the suspect to the ground. So those types of use of force don't involve a weapon, that's where you're seeing your increases. So that's a good thing, at least. Our traffic statistics, we're writing less traffic citations. About the only thing we can discern there is, we no longer have a traffic grant and we no longer have a motorcycle officer. So we're not doing specific targeted traffic operations like we were. You'll also see that we give out a lot of warnings. Most of the people we stop get a warning versus a citation. And we don't emphasize writing tickets at the Police Department. Ticket quotas are illegal, so we don't emphasize the citation. We do want our officers stopping people, and they make a judgment call sometimes, you can make an impact on a person's driving behavior just with a warning. And as you can see, we do a lot of that. But definitely, we're seeing less activity with traffic, less DUI arrests. I don't think there are any less DUIs in town, but we had one officer in particular who was very active with DUIs, and he became a field training officer and was training a bunch of new police officers over the last few years. And so as a result, he couldn't be out there by himself making those DUI arrests that he was previously. So we're going to be kind of watching this, because one of the number one complaints I get in town is traffic. So we're going to be trying to assess some other ways, in particular, since it doesn't look like we're going to get a motorcycle officer, again, our other one left to go to another agency, and I don't have as much interest in somebody wanting to ride the motorcycle. We may just designate the traffic officer as a vehicle, motor vehicle, regular four-wheel vehicle, in which case that person would be assigned only to traffic. So we're going to experiment with that over the next 12 months. Community engagement, as you can see, and it's no secret, we do a lot of it. We're always attending community events, we're always in our schools, making presentations. This is kind of a snapshot of some of the things we did over the last year, over 30 community engagement events. The Plática Latina was a huge success, as I'm sure everybody remembers, with our outreach to the Latino community. And monthly, we're constantly in the schools. We did a Chamber of Commerce brown bag event, and our Adopt a Cop program is back in full swing, which involves every fifth grade student in our Healdsburg schools. So we're proud of that program. Also, we started our youth diversion program this year. I think, if you remember, I presented on that at some point earlier. It's 100% grant-funded with some seed money that I was able to obtain to start our youth diversion program. So if a minor is involved in criminal activity, rather than just being funneled into our criminal justice system and to the probation department, they are diverted and provided with some counseling that's very holistic and involve the family and the youth to try and keep them out of the criminal justice system. And it has some great success rates. As we go into budget, we'll be looking to refund that seed money with city money, and you'll see a presentation at that point from the people that, the nonprofit that administers our program and the success rate of these kids when they participate in diversion, not ending up back in the system is pretty remarkable. So we're proud of that program this year. Parking enforcement, a couple of years ago, we were authorized to increase staffing in parking enforcement. It's taken us a while to get there. You would think that hiring three part-time parking enforcement officers would be easy, but it wasn't, particularly with the background investigations that are involved, and we want to find somebody that's the right fit, because we view parking enforcement officers sort of an ambassadorship role as well. They're out there providing information and representing the city in a positive light, so we want the right fit for that. As you can see, the numbers for actual citations is relatively flat. We expect that to change with the current year, because we have finally got all three parking enforcement officers in place. And you might have noticed, I certainly have, during peak hours, there's definitely more availability in the downtown area than there has been in prior years with us now having parking enforcement six to seven days a week. So revenue for the fiscal year was up, and you can expect to see citations increase quite a bit, would be my guess, in 2018. Code enforcement, we have one code enforcement officer, he works about 20 hours a week, and he's busy. We undertook code enforcement at the Police Department three years ago. Here's kind of a look at the different categories where he's engaged, prohibited property conditions. That's trash debris in the yard, hoarders, just a variety of health and safety issues that can come up with how somebody has their property. And that takes quite a bit of his time, as you can see, it's gone up significantly between 2016 and 2017, and these cases tend to use a lot of the code enforcement officer's time. One case can take a lot of hours. The one hoarding case in particular, as the councils were, took hundreds and hundreds of hours of time, so, and those are on the uptick. Vacation house rentals, we had 20 investigations in 2016, down in 2017 to 13. Graffiti is pretty flat, as has been our marijuana complaints. Delinquent business licenses is down, I think now that I've kind of gotten a handle on that for a while, there hadn't been any attention to that, and I think now that we've been looking at that, we only had one of those in 2017. Noise complaints, and those are not the dog complaints, the dog complaints go to animal control. The noise complaints are like, we had a few with a rooster, I think, hens that were clucking and making noise. We had a wind chimes complaint, just to give you a sense of that. So, and we investigate each and every one of them. So we also had an air conditioning unit that was too close to another property, didn't meet the setbacks, so. And one of them was a large company in town whose operation generates noise, and I know the council's familiar with that one. So a lot of variety with the noise complaints and animal complaints, both. So unpermitted second dwellings, we had two of those. So in total, you see, the numbers aren't that different, 87 and 82, but the nature has changed, the prohibited property conditions, we're definitely getting more of those. Vacation rentals, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to focus on that. I know there's a lot of interest in the community and with the council on that issue. We contracted with host compliance a few years ago, they do a really good job. If a location has a presence on the internet and they're advertising, we're going to find out about it through host compliance. We had about 13 investigations, determined seven violations during the last year. Five of those were corrected voluntarily, and I just want to point out, if we get a person that we're dealing with for the first time, we're going to always kind of warn that person and ask them to voluntarily comply. And most of the time, they do. If we get a repeat person, they're always going to be issued a citation, but we haven't encountered that very often, fortunately. But we did issue two citations for vacation rental violation. There are approximately, as you can see, 38 properties that hold themselves out as 30-plus day rentals. And you'll see they have quite a presence on the internet. And a lot of the complaints we get will relate to one of those properties that we've already looked at, or in particular, the 22 authorized B&Bs and short-term rentals that are actually lawful permitted, short-term rental locations, there are 22 of them. So a lot of the complaints that I will get, and it could be from another business or the chamber or a citizen, are one of these. And so we've become very familiar with the ones that are licensed or the ones that are doing 30 days and over business, so those would not be in violation. And after that, this is just kind of a general kind of blueprint of what happens with vacation rentals. The source of it could be host compliance and other business or the community. Each complaint is investigated by the code enforcement officer, notice of violation or citation if warranted, if we've had prior contacts. If there's a citation, they can appeal that citation, and that comes to me, I'm the hearing officer for those. And just as a reminder, the fine amount is $750 per day of the violation, there's a maximum $20,000 fine. And the finance department does a really good job of pursuing collection of those fines. Questions?
Oh, I believe there are. Thank you so much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor McCaffrey.
Chief, thanks for the report. I had a couple of questions. On the code enforcement side, you mentioned that there were some cannabis-related complaints. Is there anything, you know, with the passage of the laws in California two years ago, do you get any from use or?
Those all relate to exceeding the city's limit on growing outdoors.
Okay.
Those are the types of complaints we get.
So you don't get like complaints for people smoking it or using it?
No, sir. I mean, we could, that wouldn't be captured here, because that wouldn't be a code enforcement matter.
Right.
If someone were smoking a joint in the park in violation of our smoke-free park ordinance, it wouldn't be captured by this.
Okay.
That would be dealt with by a police officer instead.
Was that, I mean, on that side, on the, on the other statistics of, I mean, do you see a problem with that?
No, sir.
And then one last thing, you mentioned for Measure V, you were going to talk about having more youth diversion?
We'd like to continue the program.
That's great. Also, what about the automated parking enforcement? Are you interested in having that too? I know we talked about that.
That would be significant benefit.
Measure V, is that something that you're considering?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Neogus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the report. Yeah, a few things. So I'll just go down the list. The response rate, how does, the response times, how does that compare to other municipalities of our size?
You know, I tried to find some data like that, and there's no, nothing readily available. I could have made a Public Records Act request to some of our local agencies, but I didn't really want to get into the business of saying we're faster than, say, one of our sister cities. But what I can tell you in my professional opinion, and I think that's what you have to look at, is three minutes is pretty darn fast for a police car. And you have to compare the size of our city to, for like a larger city, those response times, having worked for one, will be quite a bit higher, even in some cases for emergency calls for service. So I don't have that kind of a comparison to make for you.
I noticed the suspicious, the rates of suspicions going up.
Correct.
Is there, how would you rate the, well, how would you, can you quantify the rate of suspicious versus actual? Like, is it, are people just generally more suspicious, or are there more suspicious activities?
I think maybe people are more inclined to call the police and report something that looks out of place to them, that's part of it. Because a lot, a lot of times, what is seemingly suspicious turns out to be perfectly well-explained. But in talking to our officers, there doesn't seem to be any common theme to the increase in these calls.
Okay. And then just real briefly, I wasn't clear, the 911, the sharp increase in 911s, those are mostly hangups that are the result of that?
Yes, because the only time, if somebody calls 911 and reports a bona fide emergency and we respond, then that call is going to get classified as whatever it turned out to be. The 911 calls are ones that were false or rear-end dials, you know, calls like that. I don't know if I can say the other word in a council meeting, so.
Play company? Okay.
But we have to check each one of those out. But we have to check each one of those out, so that we spend, as you can see, a lot of time dealing with those.
Sure, sure. So DUIs, you mentioned that the rates don't really, aren't really indicative of the actual DUIs. And so I think what I heard, just want to confirm, that this is something that you will be paying more attention to within 2018?
Yes, because I think the rate of DUIs in our community is the same. One of the issues we have is with increasing calls for service, that's less time that our officers have to look for DUIs and write tickets. So it comes as no surprise to me, as a police manager, that when you see an increase in calls for service, the officers have less time for discretionary things like looking for DUIs and writing citations. So the two tend to go hand in hand.
Interesting. Well, I guess specifically to follow up on Counselor McCaffrey's question about the parking revenue, I mean, given the fact that, what I thought was interesting is that revenues are going up, but the citations themselves are flat. How would you describe, how would you explain that?
Part of it's because the revenue is fiscal year, and so I don't, I mean, honestly, I'm not exactly sure about that, but I don't think the fines have changed. But there's also, I forget what the term is, there's add-ons or enhancements when a person doesn't pay on time. So in one citation, if the person pays it on time, it's a lower amount. So about the only thing I could attribute it to is maybe more people getting increased fines for not paying on time, or also the nature of the violations. Some are more expensive than others. So it could say that you're having more red zones or more handicaps, but I don't have that kind of breakdown for you.
Interesting. And then would, so back on the license reader, do you, what impact would that, do you think tool like that would have on citations revenue?
It would definitely make our parking enforcement more efficient and allow for the person to have more rounds and cover more territory. So less people would get away with the three-hour zone if we had the ALPR technology. So you'd probably see an increase in sites and an increase in revenue.
And then finally, I guess really what it comes down to is, of all the, these, the numbers here, what, you know, with the proverbial question, what keeps you up at night?
That's a fair question. Not much, quite frankly, because I have so much confidence in our staff. I really do. And we always, when we're promoting a sergeant, one of the questions we'll ask them, or when we're talking about who to promote, will say, is this the kind of person who we mind making decisions for us and dealing with issues out there while myself and other administrators are tucked away in bed? And I have a lot of confidence in our staff. So when I'm not there in the middle of the night, you know, I think we're a very safe community. We have a well-staffed police department. The council has supported us unequivocally, which we appreciate. So about the only thing that, I guess, keeps me up, if anything at all, is some sort of random, unexpected shooting event where we just, for some reason, have somebody who is mentally unbalanced come into our community to use a firearm in our schools. Because even though statistically speaking, the odds of that happening in Heelsburg are very, very slim, it's still a reality of today that we do have incidents like that, or even in a movie theater, not necessarily in a school, or at a concert in the park, some sort of random event like that worries, I think, everybody. So.
Thank you. The Counselor Gold, please.
Yes, I was just curious about those 38 homes that are being advertised as a 30-day or more rental. Do you have any way, or does the enforcement officer have any way to find out whether that's really happening?
It's a tough nut to crack, actually. They advertise that way. You know, we don't, we aren't naive enough to believe that all of them are indeed operating that way, although some of them we do believe are. So, you know, in terms of investigative strategies to try and determine that, there are some. If you look at the number of violations we have been able to determine, some of them are through that kind of work, but it's painstaking and slow.
Probably time-consuming.
Extremely. Yeah, and the hard part becomes balancing that with some of the other complaints that we get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Higley?
Just real quick, a year ago, well, almost a year ago, February 21st, we as Heelsburg made a commitment to nondiscrimination diversity. We had a packed house here, and I just wanted to kind of get an update. It seemed fairly quiet from my standpoint, but just from your perspective, kind of an update on the past year, from that meeting to, you know, any incidences with ICE, and then also going forward with some of the new rhetoric that's coming out. Just wanted to touch base and maybe you can kind of reaffirm.
We haven't had any dealings with ICE over the intervening period. We don't have any intentions of doing that. Our policy remains what was in place actually before the election, which it's not our job to do immigration enforcement. We have our job as a provincial police force to protect the community and whoever's in our city, and that includes everybody that's here. So there's been a change in the law as well that now requires us to be that way, but we always were that way. And I don't think you'll find anybody at our police department that believes we should be engaging in those types of things. And if you look at our workforce, we're pretty diverse. You know, for 18 officers, three of them are women. That's a fairly high percentage considering, as a percentage of overall, three of our five sergeants are Latino. So, you know, we have a pretty diverse workforce at the police department, and I think that's reflected in our approach to things as well, so.
Yeah, and I did want to commend you. I have noticed at the different community events, the friendly police presence at the, you know, whether it's at St. John's or the different things that the city have put on, and I think that just continues to reinforce what we did a year ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, just a couple of questions I have. First is understaffing of officers. I was curious about the tenure and just the average number of years that people stick around in Heelsburg, because I know over the years, I've heard that, you know, we have to keep it competitive. And I just wondered if you could tell me the breakdown we have.
Yeah, that's a good question. It really varies. When I first got to Heelsburg, we had a lot more senior staff. With retirements, we ended up with a bunch of vacancies that have, for a while, were kind of hard to fill. And it did relate in part to how well we compete with salary and benefits. If you look at us now, we've got a fairly new group of officers, but they seem very committed to Heelsburg. We did lose, as an example, a very talented officer to the City of Santa Rosa, our motorcycle officer. So with young officers, sometimes you will see that desire to move around and experience a busier place, but.
And follow up, how many of our officers live in the city?
That's a great question. Myself and the lieutenant, I have a sergeant. I have to do a rundown in my head. I've got one of our new officers that lives in the city. Two of our dispatchers live in the city.
So probably like, under five of the 18, fewer than?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. That are officers, police?
Right, and it's just an affordability issue. The young officer who did was able to get in on that proper, newer development at Heelsburg Avenue and Ferrero. He was able to get into one of those units.
And another question I had is, when we look at our parking enforcement, do we ever keep track in a data bank anyway distinguished between Heelsburg residents and people that are from out of town that are creating the parking issues in terms of non-enforcing or not following parking law? I wondered if we ever kept track of that, and maybe we don't.
We don't.
It'd be interesting for me to know how many people are from outside that are deciding to stay more than three hours somewhere and pay the ticket, and how that works out for them, because I've heard, I've heard people say that there might, I'm just curious about that. And then I am going to ask this council, and Chief, I'm glad you're here, to consider agendizing a discussion for increased enforcement and fines to discourage vacation rentals. I would like that to be an agenda item soon. I'm not saying it can be real soon, because we have so much, but I've really been wondering about vacation rentals and how effective we are, and I have had some interaction on that. And I think it's a good topic for us to look at and to see how we could maybe look at it with a way to discourage and also to possibly even increase fines. I know it's a challenge, but I also know that it's an issue. And I also was wondering, before I jump on that, I should ask if there's some kind of an interest in that. Maybe not real soon, but in the next few months, because I want our code enforcement officer to possibly help us look at different ways to look at the problem of people renting their homes out for fewer than 30 days. It's just been an issue for me, especially post-fire. It was a real issue for me, and I just think that it continues to be an issue. And this council, since I've been on it, I've never had the conversation with a real focused understanding of the issue. So like, for example, the data we have today is just 16 and 17. What are the years prior to that, that we've actually charged people for, you know, illegal vacation rentals? And how does that look now, and is it lessening?
I can tell you that before the police department took over, we really didn't do any vacation rental enforcement. So that's why you don't see many, much data prior to that.
Okay, so 20, when did it start? Do you know when the enforcement started?
We started three years ago.
Okay, all right.
I think that this, that kind of a discussion would be good to maybe start at the goal session, which is coming up.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it up.
You know, that's a good item that we could all have it on our radar and put it down, and maybe that, maybe that's something that, as a result of that, could come out that, you know, that's what we want to do, is step up enforcement.
If I could add to that, I think, you know, if you take a look at all of the things that our code, our part-time code enforcement officer does, if you can go back to that slide, Chief?
Yes, of course.
I think that would be an excellent time to have that discussion about budget and determine is 20 hours enough to address all of the issues, including enhanced enforcement with regards to vacation. Not asking to respond, but to add on to what you're saying, Counselor McCaffrey, that would be a good time to have that discussion.
As you can see, he's pretty busy. And that really is the real question. You look at all the different responsibilities that that one 20-hour-per-week employee has, it's quite a bit.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief, for the report, the update. Certainly important to talk about that, hear about at the beginning of the year, too. So thanks for your time and interest. I'm really proud to have you as our police chief, Chief Burke. I heard about you in Sacramento from one of your former colleagues, and he really appreciated hearing about you. So I don't remember his name, but he's from Willets, but he said, "We're really lucky to have you," and I feel the same way. I'm feeling really blessed with two chiefs here tonight. Thank you so much for keeping us safe and for being friendly and peace-oriented.
On behalf of the whole department, police department, too, thank you to the council for your unwavering support and giving us everything that we need to do our job. So we really appreciate that.
Again, thanks, City Manager, for that report update.
Mayor, so we're going to have a fire department report coming up in the next few months as well, so just to keep that in the back of your mind. So the idea is to do these updates to council on an annual basis right around the first of the year.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager. Okay, it's now time on our agenda to move to public comments on non-agenda items. So to be clear, this is a time set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest that are not on the agenda, but related to the city council. And pursuant to the Brown Act, however, the city council cannot consider any of the issues or take action on any of the requests during that comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes, and that gives everybody an opportunity to speak. And I did want to mention that, as mayor, I was hoping to get a better understanding of who does speak, and especially getting names and addresses. That is not required of you. You have the right to be anonymous when you speak at a city council meeting in the state of California, possibly in the nation. But I just want to clarify, I would appreciate it, and I know our city clerk would appreciate knowing the names of the people that speak at our meetings. And so you're invited at the podium, if you didn't already see it. There is this paper here that asks you to fill in your name and address, and if you want email and phone, and it gives us an opportunity to keep track of who's speaking. And that will be true as well when we do public comments during our, during our public meeting, public hearing. So just to mention that. So again, three minutes maximum, and we'd love to hear from people on non-agenda items now. So would anyone like to speak? Yes, that is on the agenda. It's a public hearing. Thank you. All right, so clearly, we're fine with public comments that are not on the agenda. So, oh, there's one. Thank you very much. So be sure the button's pushed and you got it. Thank you so much.
There you go. Okay. Good evening. I am the owner of Cafe Lucia, one of the businesses impacted by the Roundabout, Heelsburg Avenue Improvement Project. You'll recall that on November 20th, I stood in this very spot and posed the question, "What is the plan?" I was seeking information about what plan the city had in place to mitigate the impacts of the construction to the nearby businesses. I have attended city council meetings, coffee talks with the city, bag meetings, Heelsburg Chamber meetings, but to be honest, I'm still not completely clear on what the plan is. It seems that we would be in a perpetual holding pattern, and maybe that is the plan, and I just didn't know it until a claim is filed. So here we are. As a Heelsburg resident for 23 years and a small business owner, it feels strange to be at this crossroads where my only option is to file a claim against the City of Heelsburg, my city. I have considered the emotional toll and whether to take the financial hit and go about my business, but I just can't do that. You see, I can't shake how wrong this is. It is wrong to me that the city or any entity's right to develop and grow their business can cannibalize the hard work that I have put into my business. This project is a year behind. Assuming it is completed by this August, the new estimated date of completion, that translates to 26 months. That is a huge impact for the businesses in the area, especially the smaller ones with limited resources. We have had three businesses close on the block. Impacted businesses have had to lay off employees, change their business models, and absorb job duties in order to keep things afloat. Small business owners pay themselves less. Imagine that for the past year, that you could only cash every other paycheck. You get the paychecks, you just can't cash it. It's the cruel reality that some of the small businesses are dealing with, not because they don't have a solid business plan or good employee retention, good reputation, or good ratings, or a good product or service, but because they are trying to do business in a nightmare construction zone for the past 18 months. At Cafe Lucia, we have done everything we can think of to be proactive under these circumstances, such as starting a free corkage incentive, offering a lunch discount to stimulate lunch businesses, and launching Sunday brunch service. However, the impact is just too great. I will be filing a claim on behalf of Cafe Lucia. I believe other businesses will be doing the same. Time is of the essence. This is a pivotal moment where you, as our city council, can do the right thing by the businesses. I implore you to review the claims and financial records that substantiate the claims and get these paid as soon as possible. I want to reiterate that my claim is with the City of Heelsburg. There have been some hints that the claims would simply be passed along to Bay Cities. I want to go on record to say that is completely unacceptable. It will just result in more damages, more delays, and cause the businesses more anguish and frustration. Heelsburg city officials have publicly said that Bay Cities is difficult to work with and seems to have a disregard for the businesses. Why would you do that to your businesses? It is time for the city to stand up and protect the businesses, make your businesses whole, and by all means, recover those monies from the Bay Cities. In a moment, I will formally hand my claim on behalf of Cafe Lucia to the city clerk and consider it filed with the City of Heelsburg. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. Which button here? Is it on? Yeah. Oh, my name is Steve Laska. I'm also a business owner with my partner, Deanna, on the south side of Heelsburg Avenue. I wanted to back up what Lucia just mentioned, is that, you know, the Roundabout has just ruined business. It has. And when I signed my lease, I was under the impression, I remember having a meeting in which I was told that, you know, the Roundabout would take a year. Well, it's way over a year. And so I'm going to also be filing a claim with the city, and I hope that the city, as Lucia mentioned, you know, takes care of the claims, you know, because it's going to, I'm sure it's going to be a while before, you know, the city and Bay City, you know, comes to any kind of an agreement. And from what I understand, and I want to learn more about this, I know that this is not the form to do it, but that from what I understand, there's a, you know, contractual agreement, obviously, with the city and Bay City, and that, within that contractual agreement, that if they were late, passed a certain date, that they would be subject to fines or having to pay something. gonna take a while between the city and that entity to come to an agreement, but I do believe that we deserve to be taken care of first. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay. All right. The next agenda item, which is the consent calendar. So essentially, we're looking to just look it over, and is there anyone that wants anything changed, or?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All those in favor? Roll call. Oh, pardon me. Roll call. Thank you. Sorry. Councilwoman McGold?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Naokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Higley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Consent calendar just passed, and we're moving now to item seven, which is the public hearing for the extension of a moratorium established by interim ordinance number 1170 and municipal code amendments regarding the retail sale of firearms. So at this time, we are holding a public hearing regarding that extension of the moratorium. And I'm going to begin this with a staff report, I believe, City Manager. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we will begin then with Director Rosa, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mansell, members of the city council. Before I get started tonight on the presentation, I'd like to also introduce Joel Galbreth, who is a senior planner on our staff and has done a lot of the background research for the item tonight. So I invited him to be helpful in answering any specific questions. So there's three recommended actions for us to consider tonight. The first would be to hold a public hearing, followed by a consideration to adopt an urgency ordinance extending the temporary 45-day moratorium on new retail gun shops up to additional 10 months and 15 days. And third, by motion, provide direction to staff regarding amendments to the land use code. And just bring to attention, that recommended action is slightly different than what's in your staff report. It had actually said, provide recommendations to the planning commission, and it's actually more appropriate to provide those recommendations to staff, since we're the ones that will be doing the research. So as you know, this item's been to the council previously, so just a quick recap on the prior actions for the audience. On December 18th of 2017, the council voted unanimously to adopt ordinance 1170, establishing a 45-day moratorium on new retail uses selling firearms. And then most recently this month, on January 8th, the council voted unanimously to issue a report stating the measures taken by the city to address issues identified in ordinance number 1170. And also just a short recap of the review of our current firearms ordinance and where gun shops are permitted. So they're permitted as of right in the downtown commercial or CD zone, and also our service commercial zone, CS. Together with Plaza Retail, the PR zone, these districts cover our downtown area. The CD and the CS districts include multiple varied uses. You'll see a variety of things in our zoning code that would include daycare, multifamily residential, professional offices, retail, bars, cocktail lounges, churches, hotels, restaurants, and other tourist-oriented uses. And the map on the right side of the screen just highlights where those two primary zones are, where they are allowed by rights. So you've got on the northern section, along Heelsburg Avenue, which is bisected by Dry Creek Road, you have our CS district in the darker pink-purple. And then in the lower area, you'll see in a thick black line that's highlighted where our downtown district is, and the lighter pink is the CD district. Current land use regulations for firearm-type businesses. We do have limited regulations governing guns currently. That would include no home sales are permitted, a permit from the chief of police is required to carry concealed weapon, and discharge of weapons in the city is prohibited. So what would this urgency ordinance do? It would extend the existing 45 more, 45-day moratorium on new retail gun shops up to additional 10 months and 15 days. It would allow staff time to study the most appropriate locations for gun sales. We would be drafting the appropriate regulations, present those comprehensive recommendations to the planning commission, and then if they made an action to approve that, it would be followed by council. So since the last meeting in January, we have actually already started our research. And so some of those preliminary potential amendments that could be requiring a CUP and establish a specific provision requiring separation from sensitive uses, such as schools or daycares, we could also look at requiring specific security measures. We could not allow gun, gun sales in the CD district is another option. We could allow gun sales in the CS district with a conditional use permit, and also allow gun sales only in the industrial district with a conditional use permit. And what would be the benefits of a CUP for firearm and land uses? Would include public information noticing and input, additional study of adjacent land uses to see if particular locations are appropriate, and we would look at sensitive uses around there. Would include identification of operational restrictions, ensuring compatibility with adjacent properties. And then, of course, the planning commission does have the ability to revoke conditional use permits if they're not in terms of their, with their conditions. So our broader look is, if we were to include the industrial districts, which you'll see in this map highlighted in blue, it does significantly increase areas where we could study. We currently are working on putting some definite buffers over that area of where some sensitive uses are. Our preliminary findings are there are still are a variety of places where gun shops could still be allowed. So that's, that was key to some preliminary findings. And we are going to continue the land use code research as some of our next steps. And then, once we have those further refined, we will bring a recommendation to the planning commission and make recommendations of where firearm sales would be allowed, and if that would be with a CUP. And then we'd bring that commission recommendation back to the city council for a first and second reading. And there's the recap of the recommended actions for tonight. And we are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Director DeRosa. Counselor McCaffrey, do you have a question?
Yeah. And here, we're considering extending the moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days. Why is that? That seems like a random number. Why is that?
Do you want to get that?
Why is it 10 months and 15 days?
That's what's in the government code about extending a, an urgency ordinance. We certainly don't anticipate it will take that long. In fact, Director DeRosa believes that we can get any recommendations that the council makes to the planning commission. Tell us the deadline again, or the timeline.
So we're looking at the second meeting in February, potentially the first meeting in March. And then the city council, if the planning commission did make an action to approve the ordinance changes, that would go to the council 30 days later.
So the 10 months and 15 days is by government, government code, and then, but it's, it's, we don't know what is gonna happen or how.
It's the what-if. The challenge is, we can set, we can, we can sit here and talk about when we think we'll get to the planning commission, the council, but other things come up in city business that may, call it Murphy's Law, that may take this item and move it, move it to a later date. But I think the intent of staff is to get this result, if it is council's desire to extend the moratorium tonight, to get this item resolved as quickly as possible. But again, I, I'm always, I probably sound like a broken record. I'm always wary of setting a hard date because, because of the what-if, and we've seen those things come up from time to time. But it is staff's intention to get this resolved as quickly as possible, if it is council's desire to extend the moratorium.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. And then, secondly... So tonight, there's, there's a couple of different things we're, we're talking about. The public hearing is based on the extending the urgency ordinance. Would that public hearing have a, does that have a second reading? Does that ordinance have a second reading in another week or two weeks?
No, because this is an urgency ordinance. There's no second reading. We're not filing the, following the usual procedure. When we, if we do, if the council does, does want to change your land use code, or implement any other changes to your municipal code, those changes would follow the regular process, and that would involve a first and a second meeting. So tonight, we're simply asking for an extension of the urgency ordinance, so that we can have the time to prepare a permanent ordinance and get it back to you at some point.
So in regards to the public hearing, the public hearing is specifically about the urgency ordinance and extending that, but are the public also allowed to comment on the direction to staff, given that that's a separate thing? Is that also kind of included in the, in the public hearing as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else would like to ask a question? Counselor Naoket?
Yeah, I guess what, what, what's not here is, I mean, I'm looking at, at the zoning maps, right? And I'm looking at the existing California statutes about the restrictions of, you know, gun shops, like specifically about security. I'm thinking like, in the, given the intersections of those, of those two sets of regulations, is, can a, a gun shop even exist in the commercial retail? So for instance, state, state regulations are talking about security where you have to have like half-inch bars of, you know, steel or, and steel grate. I mean, and are, is, are those regulations, those security regulations compatible with the, the kinds of, of design guidelines, rules we have for the downtown area?
Well, that's something we would need to research. So if you extend the moratorium, we would be doing that kind of research. So we haven't done all that research.
Okay. Okay. Pretty much answered my questions.
Counselor Gold? No question? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Just a couple of questions. So to the fire chief, quick question, the, some of the comments that had come up during this process was, in the event of a fire, so there was concern about additional, you know, because ammunition, is there an additional concern from your perspective about if there was a fire, just in the recent fires, there was concern about propane tanks exploding? And so just from your perspective?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor Higley. So as I understand it, the question, is there any additional hazard if there were a fire in a place where they sold ammunition, right? So my answer to that would be yes, a little bit. I mean, we encounter ammunition in a lot of fires. We go on a lot of residential structure fires, a lot of people have ammunition in their homes. My experience with ammunition is that when it burns, it certainly doesn't fire as if it were being fired from a firearm. When it goes off, the projectile is heavier than the casing that it's in, so it's typically the casing that, that flies off of it. And in my experience, it doesn't travel very far. So I don't have a fear of, you know, ammunition shooting out of a building like somebody's firing weapons out of it. But, I mean, there is a hazard because it is ammunition, but, you know, we encounter a lot of hazards in our job, and that's, that's something that we would be aware of, but through pre-fire planning and, you know, inspections and proper storage. Also, it would be my intention to not have a fire in, in that building. So I can tell you this, on the, on the night of the firestorm, I was actually down on Piner Road when the, when the gun store down there burned down, when it ignited and when it burned. And I stopped there for a while with the engine company that was down there. I did not witness any, you know, any ammunition firing off in any direction. I certainly didn't witness anybody getting hurt or any equipment with bullet holes in or anything like that. So yes, it is, and it could be an increased hazard, but again, it depends on what's there and how it's stored. But I want to alleviate any fears that, you know, if there were a fire, that it most likely would not be firing out of the building, if that's what people are concerned about. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And then the second part would be with regard to storage, and this might be more towards staff. Are there any special storage requirements about ammunition, or guns, or firearms that is related to, from the fireside? Like, do they have to put them in certain kind of containers, or is it just on a shelf?
Yeah, I can answer that. There are, in fact, maybe I'll call our fire marshal, Linda Collestrip, here in case I missed something she wants to add. But I think there are a few provisions in the fire code that, that have to do with quantities, and once you reach certain quantities, there are certain ways in which you have to store it. But again, I, it's hard to answer that question until a project is submitted, and then we can see what our proposed business is, is wanting to do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's good. Yeah.
She has nothing to add? Thank you.
And then, police chief, kind of along the same lines from security. I've read a little bit on the kind of state requirements with having, like you mentioned, the, the steel rod or something, how they're stored, how the guns are stored. But the concern that I've heard from the community relates to breaking and entering, smash-and-grab type of robbery type, you know, might be considered an attractive nuisance to have guns, or diamonds, or anything of value. From your perspective, are, are there any additional concerns related to a gun shop?
Well, I've had gun stores in my jurisdictions before, back in Lakeport, and when I was with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I can really have to think to, to have a hard time even recalling an incident where I had to respond to, to a gun store. There, it's a pervasively regulated industry by both the state and the federal government, which is why your average police administrator at a city level won't have a lot of experience in all of the various regulations and requirements that the gun stores comply with. But from my perspective, it's just another business that I am going to have a responsibility to protect and keep safe. And like a bank, you know, in my experience, the gun stores, they have their guns for their customers to look at during the daytime, and at night, they take them and secure them in a safe. I've never been aware, as a police officer, of a smash-and-grab type of situation. They don't want to lose their guns, and their guns are insured, so they have requirements, not only from the state as to how they store them, both when they're on display, but through their own policies to, to want to keep them as well. So like a bank, they implement, in my experience, controls so that you can't just come in and smash and grab one. But like any establishment, it could be robbed or burglarized. You know, they usually have, like a bank, an alarm system to prevent that, both while they're open and closed. So from my standpoint, really, it's just kind of like the fire chief. It's a, it's a business. It's a different type of business. How do we work with them to ensure that their business is protected and safe in our community? Because if they are here, that becomes a responsibility, like any of our types of businesses that might, you know, have something of value in them, like the jewelry store or the bank, you know, how do, how do we protect them, just like anybody else? But in my experience, they're no greater of, of a nuisance to attract that type of activity or, or crime than would be a bank or a jewelry store. Indeed, I've been to more bank robberies and jewelry store robberies in my career, or been aware of them ever than anything happening like that at a gun store.
Thank you. Couple more. This is back to the planning. So I'd sent an email earlier and kind of answered, but I wanted to make sure that the public had a chance here, because a lot of those questions weren't necessarily originated from me. They're based on emails or concerns that I've heard. And two questions relate more to getting away from all the safety side, but now the visual side for anywhere downtown. If we're walking past a gun store, and I know state regulations are pretty strict on displaying of guns. And so what can they, you know, what if they're required to put bars on the window? Can they put bars on the window? Can they have tinted windows? What is permitted, what is restricted for that type of use?
Yeah, so, both the current guidelines we have now and the ones that are on their way to the council to be adopted, hopefully in the next month, do talk about transparency. So, windows do need to be transparent up to, you know, 80%. In terms, there's no requirement that a product is to be visibly displayed from the window. I think that was one of your questions you asked. In terms of would bars be prohibited? So, there's some general policy statements in our design guidelines about making sure that uses are compatible or the aesthetic character of what changes are proposed are compatible with the general nature of the surrounding site. And so, we could make a finding through our, through the planning director interpretation, through a design review. As I had, I think, said in the email, that someone just coming in for a simple change of use doesn't necessarily trigger our design guidelines. But, through our new ordinance, we, if we thought that something was not compatible in character, that could be something that could be referred.
And is that something, once, say, the new design guidelines are updated, then is that something that an existing use would need to come up to? Or would they be considered grandfathered in?
So, with our new guidelines, and we could just use this project as an example of if they wanted to put bars, that would be something that would go to, we could say that would go to planning commission because that would have to be an interpretation of, does it meet the guidelines? And staff would make a recommendation and that would, you know, there would be a discussion and a decision. Because currently, right now, like I said, if it's a use that is allowed and there's no, nothing that would trigger it discretionary, we need that additional language in our ordinance to bring that forward to be able to have a, an interpretation by the planning commission that says that it's not an allowed treatment for an exterior of a building.
I'd like to add a couple of things to that. Do you want to finish your questions first? Okay, a couple of things. First, if there was a state requirement of certain safety or security provisions at specifically a gun store, those would like, those state requirements were federal, but more likely the state. The state requirements are so much more comprehensive than federal. Those would almost certainly trump our design guidelines. Also, if, this might be the flip side of what you're asking. If the council wanted to implement safety or security measures for gun shops, we could likely do that as long as those measures were supported by findings that indicated that they were taken in the interest of safety or to prevent a nuisance.
I'm thinking more in terms of, there's language throughout the, throughout our planning documents that talk about compatibility with neighborhood, you know, complementing surrounding neighborhoods and that sort of thing, or neighbors and neighbors' businesses. And, you know, so it'd be more, okay, if I'm walking to use this location from the toy store and walk past, what are we walking past before you get to the restaurant in Raven? And that's, that was where I was asking, like, okay, if they want to have bars in the windows, but that's not a welcoming feel or whatever you call it. So, that was kind of where I was coming from. The second part, the last question I had was related to, there was a discussion at the original meeting about training. And with that, the concern that I heard was, we don't, you know, people are interpreting that as a firing range or some kind of volume going out, whether it's, I don't know, the type of training, I guess that would be to the applicant. But, whether it's, say, it's law enforcement training and you're hearing, get down, get down, you know, whatever the training is, or firing of blanks. Do we have existing ordinances that would prevent that type of use or that type of sound?
Not to my knowledge. I know the applicant will speak today. He actually, I had a phone conversation with him today and he said he's no longer planning to do the training on the second floor. And my understanding of that proposal, when we had an earlier conversations, that it's going to be like a simulator, so I don't, you know.
More like lasers?
That was my understanding. But, you know, we can ask the applicant to clarify if, in the future, he does plan to do that, what that would look like.
And that, the second part of that relates to parking. So, if they do a classroom or training upstairs, what does that do to the parking requirement for that particular location? And that's it for my questions.
Okay. And in parking, if what's, we consider an intensification of use, then that could true. Because in the downtown district, that's an in-lu parking. So, we would have analyzed that to see if that would trigger our in-lu parking fee, but no requirement to provide parking on-site.
I want to add a couple of things to the noise questions that you had. The city does have an ordinance in place right now prohibiting any discharge of a weapon other than for police officers in the city limits. So, it may be moot because it sounds like the applicant perhaps is not planning to do a training center there. But, if the applicant were planning to do that, it would not be able to involve the firing of weapons. Also, regulations on noise are often the types of things that are conditions on a use permit.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, I'm opening up the public hearing now. So, once again, I'm asking you to come forward for this open hearing. And it's a public hearing that requires you to come forward. We have a three-minute timeframe. And I would appreciate, I'm asking you to say your name and your address or at least say your name. And if you'd like to fill in, we do have the form up there and you can just take it to the side after you speak and fill it in or however it works. But, I would like to invite you to come to the public hearing right now up front. And again, three minutes and I'm going to hold it really tight. So, when the red light goes off, you get the yellow for the warning. The red goes off because I really want to make sure that we get as many people as are expecting to speak or want to speak. So, right now, I'd like to ask, as my prerogative as mayor, how many of you plan to speak tonight? How many of you are planning to speak? I know you can get into your burst, but, so raise your hand so I can kind of see numbers. Thank you so much, okay? And you are able to speak without raising your hand. I'm just trying to get an understanding. So, I invite you to come forward and you have three minutes to give us some public comment. And I'm open for that right now. We are open. So, would anyone like to go first? Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, press the button and say your name if you would, please. Thank you.
All right. My name is Reenie Kiff and I live in Alexander Valley. And I'm the least intelligent person on guns that will probably speak to you in the whole duration of this subject. I wasn't raised with guns nor in a hunting family, but I married into a Montana family. So, I have great respect for ranchers and the wilderness. And I did a lot of hiking with, and backpacking with another family with young children and they were hunters and fishermen. So, I'm not totally biased, but I'm almost totally biased and I, I have to admit that. I talked to a couple of my own family members in lieu of preparing to speak to you and they both said to me, my, they're both sons of mine. And they said, Mom, you can't outlaw something just because you don't like it, you know? So, because if it were left up to me, I would ask you to outlaw guns in the whole country. We certainly don't need to learn why that is because our country's been suffering from these violent things that the police chief mentioned that perhaps would keep him awake at night. So, a gun shop to me is a scary thing. And I feel very, very strongly about it. That's why I'm here, even if my opinion means little. And I want to first thank four of the five of you because the minute I send off an email, I heard back from you almost the same day about the fact that you had received the email and nobody made fun of me. You asked me good questions and invited me to come, you know, make sure that I came and learned about what you all have been doing. And I so appreciate your response to me because it made me feel less of an idiot that I'm carrying on in front of you. But, one of the things, and I am moderating my outlook just a tiny bit because of your report, all of your reports, because I'm heartened if there's a chance of at least removing the gun shop from the location that it's hoping to be in. And because I do think that that's important, that who are we, you know? And every time one little shop goes out of business in favor of the wine industry or another restaurant, you know, we lose what we loved and why we moved here. And I have to admit that I have a vested interest in the fabric store. It's called Fabrications on Matheson. I've worked for the fabric store for 30 years as their bookkeeper and my sister-in-law owns a shop. And we were hoping to get that business. So, I'll just, I wanted to just tell you, I have a problem with ammunition and I wrote a little article on the problems with lead ammunition. So, I'm going to, can I give this to the clerk?
Please, please do. And thank you again for writing. You did write us all and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're open for the second person or someone else that would like to speak tonight in this public hearing. Again, I'm going to ask you to watch your time. I think I'll put my hand up like this, not to freak you out, but that'll be like the yellow, which is 30 seconds, right, city clerk? Is that a 30-second warning? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Lever. I live on South Fitch Mountain Road. And my concern is, I want to know how we can quantify or honor the character of the town, which I don't think, you know, in my seven years of living here, I don't think it involves guns. I don't see guns as part of the experience of walking the streets of this town. And the other question I have is about where the intersection is or how we can study the intersection of mental health issues vis-à-vis gun ownership and gun, gun stores. Because I think the intersection of those two issues is what causes a lot of the problems with guns in our country. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Paul. All right, third speaker. Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Vicki McEnhill. I, my husband and I moved here in 1995. We brought a home, we bought a home. We fell in love with the charm of the town. We are raising two 16-year-olds in this town. I work in this town. My husband works in this town. Guns do not belong in this town. It is not part of the fabric of what makes up this town. We have a lot of interest in the movie theater. We attend movies at the movie theater. My daughter dances ballet at the, at the Raven Theater. My hus, my son performs plays at the Raven Performing Arts Theater. We walk by the toy store. We eat lunch in downtown. One of the reasons that the gun store does not belong at this location is the gun store is not a destination shop. Anybody who is looking for a product like this is going to travel outside of town if that's where the location is. We can't buy underwear in this town. We would like to buy fabric in this town. We would like to support the arts in this town. There are so many more uses that that building would be good for, not a gun shop. We have a dealer that deals guns on West Matheson out of his home. You can go to Walmart and buy a gun. You can buy guns at Big Five. This county is not deprived and the gun owners are not deprived of a place to buy guns and ammunition. So, I hope that the, with the amount of money that we have spent on tourism, drawing tourists in and the livability study that's being done, that all those things will be considered when you make up your mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vicki. All right, ready for our fourth speaker. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Harley Robinson. I'm here in behalf of the gun store and training facility. In 1979, I became a child statistic, a child shooting child with a gun. I had no training, never seen a gun before except for toy guns. Me and my friend were sitting playing in his house. You know, the 70s were a little bit more lenient, kids playing around by themselves. We had couches flipped over, cap guns, looked like real guns back then, playing bang, 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 back and forth. He told me to go into his parents' room with him. Walked in there, he pulled the gun off the shelf, but it was another fake gun. I grabbed it from him, I looked at it and I pointed at him and said, freeze, shot him in the stomach with a 38 stub nose. He laid there on the floor, smoke everywhere from the gunpowder. I was in panic at that time. He was screaming, crying in pain, blood everywhere, hole in his stomach. I, I didn't know what to do at that time. I ran out and called zero on the phone because I knew what zero was back then. Call operator, call ambulance. And they, I talked to them, they came, ambulance came. And my parents finally came over. I sat on the couch with them as I wheeled him out on a stretcher and he was looking at me, I was looking at him and he was my best friend. That boy wore a Klossner bag for seven years. I never got to see him again except for once after that, but somebody told me that. But, I think as an adult now, that I do have training. I've gone through many courses. I let my children shoot guns. I teach them how to use it, how to load it, how to clean it, where to point it, where not to point it. So, I'm all for gun training courses for children, adults, anybody that can get proper training, so that doesn't happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Thank you. Come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeannie Khan. I live on Mill Creek, which is outside the Healdsburg exact area. But, Healdsburg is my home. And I moved here about two years ago because of the hometown feel, the relaxed area, everybody being so friendly and welcoming and wonderful. We do not live anymore in a hunting gathering society where guns are important for our survival. They are not anymore. I think the previous speakers have addressed that, that guns are very dangerous or potentially dangerous. Even those people who are trained to use guns, a gun is a weapon. And I know that a lot of people say cars are weapons and whatever, but I think that guns are an unnecessary weapon. My other issue is simply the location of the proposed gun store. It makes absolutely, I'm an educator. It makes absolutely no sense. There's no logic in putting it next to a toy store. It is so counterintuitive. Anyone who sees children coming in and out of that store and walking by a potential gun store, the questions that will arise and the potential results that parents may, or the parents may have to encounter, why can't I have a gun? Well, let's go to the toy store and you can have one. As remote as that may seem, and again, as lacking in common sense, it is an easy out. So, again, to put it next to a toy store and within walking distance of the restaurants and of the theaters and of the places that generally just make Healdsburg a place that you love to come to in the morning for your coffee and your bagel or whatever, and just wander around and sit on the plaza and look at the children play. It makes no sense to have a gun store within the city districts.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Just make sure the mic's closed to you. Um, just make sure the mic's close to you. Okay.
There's a long way to go up here. Um, I, I emailed all of you. My name's Catherine Nelson, I'm a Healdsburg resident, I have two young children. Um, thank you for your responses, all very thoughtful, and I appreciated that. Um, I want to acknowledge the previous speaker, um, and his experience with guns, and I also, um, I mean, it's hard to come after that. Um, I want to acknowledge the potential owner of this store, um, obviously an expert and someone who knows what they're doing. My only, um, concern and the thing that I would like to mention is that, um, it just doesn't seem for me, um, to be the proper location. Um, I acknowledge the, the, um, having a training center for certain people, um, they feel strongly about it, can have its benefits. Um, I acknowledge someone's right to be the owner of an establishment that sells weapons and guns. Um, I would just ask the council and the planning commission to, um, look at the laws and also just, uh, look at common sense in terms of where would be a, a good place for this, uh, establishment and something that would work for us at, in, in Healdsburg. Um, I'm not supportive of it being at that place. Um, I don't think the toy store and the theater are great bookends for a gun store, and I would encourage the council and the planning commission to look for other areas of town that would be appropriate, um, for the store. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Catherine. All right. Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Uh, my name's Lawrence Carey. I live on the out, north side of town, Parkland Farms. Now, when I first heard that a gun store was possibly going in, I was like, oh, hell no, this ain't gonna happen. But after I calmed down and did some research and listened to Councilman Hagley, um, it's, it's Mr. Gobolden's right to have a, to open a gun store if he wants to. Now, I don't like the location, that's the only thing. Um, one thing that I've always talked to my friends, my fiance, whatever, how great it is to be downtown Healdsburg and you'll see groups, five, six women walking around because they feel safe. They feel safe in Healdsburg, it's a nice place, they can drink, they, they don't feel threatened or anything like that. So I guess I would have to pare what other people have said, that, uh, the, the location is the issue for me. Now, if Mr. Gobolden wants to move, you know, north of town, closer to me, that's fine. It's just, there's not, we don't have that, you know, the, the traffic, the tourist traffic. Um, I did a little research because initially it was like, well, you know, what's this all about? I did a little research and just went to Mr. Gobolden's, uh, Facebook page. Seems like a decent guy, comes from a hunting family, pictures of his kids, uh, taking down a wild boar, and I, I respect that. I come from an industry, I worked 45 years in the construction industry, which is driven by testosterone. So I know both sides. I, I know, I've known a lot of hunters, and I know a lot of guys that get their masculinity from a pistol grip, if you know what I mean. So, uh, you try to weigh those, and I got into a, a kind of a heated argument a few weeks ago with a young man. We said, well, Healdsburg is a hunting town, you know, yeah, well, yeah, maybe back in the day, but it used to have prunes here too, back in the day. Uh, things change. And it, the conversation devolved from trying to come to a compromise or trying to understand each other to, you know, maybe they should outlaw cars because cars kill people, uh, to, uh, gee, um, what's his name? Uh, Al Gore's got a big house with, uses all kinds of energy. So it's kinda like went right wing, left wing. But I guess in closing, Mr. Gobolden seems like a decent guy, just from what little I know, and, uh, he has the right to open up a gun store somewhere here in town. I just think the location downtown is not the right place. That's it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Lawrence. Welcome.
Valerie White. I, I, it's, it's a question I guess I can't ask because there's no discussion, but I don't, I'm hoping that anybody that wants to open a store in town doesn't have the right, and that you only can discuss zoning and compatibility, but just say no to certain businesses. I know some towns say no to chain restaurants, some towns say no to, I think marijuana stores, if I read papers correctly. And it seems that the discussion always kind of, everybody distanced themselves in discussing zoning, in discussing business. And to me, their guns have one purpose, and it's to kill. But everybody wants to distance themselves from that so that if they approve a gun store, they don't feel any responsibility saying, I have enabled and I've condoned the possibility that somebody's gonna get killed.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. All right. Um, please. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Tony Frye. I've lived in Healdsburg for over 60 years, retired as a schoolteacher of 35 years in town here, had a lot of contact with parents, um, students, athletes, and, uh, came for a couple reasons. I always told my students in my civics classes that, you know, there's, there's right and wrong, and then there's the law and what you can prove. And everything you've heard is just their opinions, their, this opinion or that opinion. The facts are, it's zoned for a, a gun store now. You're gonna have to change the zoning and change everything to make it happen. For these people that haven't been in town very long, there used to be two gun stores within 150 yards of, uh, this proposed, uh, store. There was one right down, uh, um, by CVS, which was the, uh, that sold guns. There was also a, uh, Healdsburg Sporting Goods, which was a major sporting goods. The gentleman retired, otherwise you would have still two gun shops in town. So that's again, probably why there hasn't many ordinance changes or changes. It was zoned for guns, and there's been gun shops there. I wanted to also talk a little bit about, um, Scott Gobolden. I've known him for almost all his life, and I've heard some despairingly remarks that came to your reports and different things. And he's one of the most honorable, honest guys you'll ever meet. Any of you people tonight, if you went outside and your car didn't start, or you stopped on the side of the road and you had a flat tire, he would stop and help you. And that's just the kind of guy he is. They also talked about the, um, the different things, this is not a place for Healdsburg and this and that. The, you know, not too far from the, uh, the gun store proposal, there's theaters, and they talk about the, well, don't they have very violent movies in those theaters? And don't they have, uh, um, X-rated type movies? So again, some of the logic here just doesn't make sense. But, uh, again, I think it's, it's pretty obvious that there's some people that are slanted in prejudice, and that's the way it's always gonna be. Bottom line is, is it's zoned right now for it. He's being detained from progressing in this, and it's a matter of right and wrong, but also it's a matter of the law. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony. All right. Next speaker, anybody else wanna speak? Thank you.
Hi, Marilyn Joyce. Good to see you all. So we have a hotel proposed on the plaza, displacing some of our favorite local businesses. Fabrications was looking at that spot. I just wanna put my vote into or behind Fabrications moving next to the Raven and the toy store. I don't know about the legalities of, um, the gun store, or do I have an opinion? But that would be my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Is anyone else wanting to speak in this public hearing regarding this moratorium and the urgency? Yes.
I'm also a resident and a mother of two small children.
Okay, may I ask you to put the mic up? And welcome. Yes, there you go. And your name?
I am Catherine Sherbeck. Um, live in Healdsburg, mom of two small children and a business owner, and I'm here to also, um, not support the gun store location and hope you'll consider a different location. I don't think it's appropriate in any sort of way, and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello again.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Gobolden, and obviously I'm the applicant to this gun store. And I thank for the opportunity to address the questions that you had last meeting, December 18th, uh, 2017. And I just wanna present to you six key points that I trust will assist you in your decision regarding the denial of this resolution, actually. One, my purpose. Two, benefits. Three, addressing the miss of violence and robberies with guns. Prevention, the architectural, architectural integrity of the store, and the government code 65858. Sale firearms is just a portion of what I'd like to offer the city and the greater surrounding areas of the county. Uh, I believe gun ownership should, to be truly safe, needs ongoing training. I mean, just like driving a car. Uh, you not drive a car for four or five years, you forget how to drive a car. Um, you need to have the mental capacity to keep remembering thi, these things. It, it is a perishable, um, mindset. Um, so let me get into the purpose. Um, it's basically to provide an education and focus on gun safety and training to prevent accidents. As you heard, um, they do happen. Um, about 3,500 kids are shot a year because they have a lack of knowledge of a gun, and they're taught, um, that guns are okay to play with. Um, but again, so teaching children is a good passion of mine. I've, I teach my nephew since he was seven years old about a BB gun, uh, where to point it, the direction of it. Um, and it goes on from there, not only for kids, but for the general public, um, where they can go and train at their leisure, including having a membership program, um, uh, membership for the training programs. Um, also to bridge the gap. I waited last, I think I'm gonna be last to speak, to see how many people are way on this side with no guns at all, and how many people are for guns. Obviously, the hunters are in the woods, but, um, sometimes that bridge can be gapped just with knowledge, and I, I think that knowledge is needed. Um, also, one of the purposes is to provide locals with a store they can purchase firearms, fishing, hunting, camping equipment, provide top-of-the-line clothing for these industries. The equipment will be useful for the locals to hunt the hills and fish in the lakes and in the rivers that we have so prevalent here. Also plot, provide a place where people can go and just sit and talk about their adventures. So these are the necessary things I think it takes to make, um, a gun store go a, as a license. Are we done? Well, I had a whole, well, basically, what I wanna say is, there's so much bias in your guys' report, and it's even biased that I get three minutes to tell you about my plan when the city has 15 minutes or 20 minutes to tell you about their plan. Very biased. So one thing I'm gonna skip to real quick, I might even go a little bit over, is your government code. And I'm gonna say this real quick, it's the first line of it. Without following the procedures otherwise required, here's the key word, prior to the adoption of a zoning ordinance, you already have a zoning ordinance. So this code that they're having you do for the 45-day moratorium is actually moot. And to go another 10 months and 15 days to delay me? I just caution you what the law says and what you guys are about to get into. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Part of what I need direction on, city attorney, and since, you know, I'm curious about this. So when an applicant submits, I'm hearing different things about this use, and I understand that, that we're gonna be talking as a counsel in a minute, once we close down public hearing time. But I just wanna clarify procedurally, um, when an applicant puts forth an idea for a business, does he or she need to delineate what that business will be? Because I'm hearing different things about the use of this place, and I'm hearing it's a sporting goods store, then I'm hearing it's a training center, then I'm hearing it's a gun shop. I'm just curious. So maybe that's a rhetorical question, maybe you wanna answer it later, but that's something that came up for me as I listened to the applicant. I'm just curious.
Well, I can explain the process in terms of what we have to date, is that, you know, there was a business license that was completed, and our process is that, uh, that starts in the finance, and then it will come to the planning department, and there is a place for a project description, and we will evaluate it just based on the content of what is provided in the description.
Thank you. So I'm again, offering any public comment before we close it down. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. I don't know, is this all working here? Um, I wasn't really planning on speaking, so thank you for the opportunity. Um, I guess, uh, my overarching comment and reflection on everybody's comments is, um, the gentleman that would like to open the gun shop, I, honestly, I thank him for bringing this all to our attention. Um, I think what this illustrates is that our zoning laws don't necessarily reflect, um, what some, what, what usagees we think are appropriate or not. And it's time for our zoning laws to be a little bit more specific, uh, be a little bit more clear, um, and be transparent to shop owners and residents. Because I read through all of this, and I, and I'm a little confused. I mean, I know that I don't think that that's the right spot for a gun shop. I also know that it's his right to have a gun shop there if he'd like it. So it's time for us to update our zoning laws and be clear. And I think, um, as a city, we owe that to the people. So I hope that's something that, as a community, we, we think about and reflect on, and I hope that five or 10 years from now, we're not having the same discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before we close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. All, all those in favor, or do we need to do a roll call? All those in favor? Okay. Okay. So at this point, um, I'm gonna offer opportunity for the council to, um, discuss and raise questions and consider the actions that our staff has given us with, um, our public comment and more information given to us. So who would like to begin?
Mayor Mansell, if I could interject briefly. So I just wanna clarify that the two actions we're asking council to take tonight. One is, if, if, if there are four of you who wish to extend the urgency ordinance, that would be the first action to take. Um, and, um, if you do decide to do that, we can go into the second portion of it. If your desire is not to extend the urgency ordinance, then there is no need to go on to the third action. That makes sense, which would be to provide direction.
So city manager, would you like me to direct the conversation that way? Is that what you're suggesting, that I go with that first point before we go to the next?
No, I'm just suggesting what the actions the council is to take, however you would like to do that, Mayor.
So you may propose that idea, Councilor McCaffrey?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Um, I would propose that we talk about, um, first, uh, number two, the urgency ordinance, and then, um, kinda get into, um, number three, providing the direction. And, um, so regarding that, I, I think that there's been a, a lot of, you know, opinions and, and healthy, uh, discussion about this. And my question that I had before, um, we opened the public hearing was about this 10 months and 15 days, and the answer that I got back from staff was, is that the 10 months and fix, 15 days is not the, it's not the anticipated or intended length of time that it's gonna take to figure this out. And I know that, I know our planning staff, I know our senior staff, and I know that they're speaking the truth. And, um, I think that, um, the last speaker is correct, that this is something that kind of popped up out of nowhere, when, you know, usually we think about, um, wine tasting rooms and hotels and, and things that, that visitors do, and we're really concerned with that. And in the meantime, you know, you have a town that was founded in 1857 that, you know, there was a lot of, um, you know, outdoors people and, um, farming and ranching and things that involve, uh, firearms for lots of purposes happening as far as we can imagine back in time, and that has been part of Healdsburg. And I'm not in favor of... And I'm not in favor of completely outlaw, or trying to completely outlaw gun sales. In town, however, I'm in favor of extending the temporary moratorium so that we can have our planning staff, our planning commission, and then our council come up with zoning codes, all the things that Councilmember Hagley, or Vice Mayor Hagley was talking about. You know, there's all these little nitty-gritty details that we need to go over, and I think we need the time to do that. And I don't think that that, it's going to take 10 months and 15 days. I think that the City Manager outlined a reasonable timeframe, maybe in the three months. But of course, that's not official because you never know what's going to happen. So I'm in favor of extending the moratorium, and I think that taking it through the process is going to be healthy for everybody. And so that's where I stand.
Councilor McCaffrey. Councilor Gold?
Yes, I have to agree with the speakers who've noted that it's not a very appropriate location for a gun shop. For one thing, I don't think it would be fair to the owner of the toy store who's been there, I don't know, I think at least 25 years. I don't remember. I've been here 25 years, and it seems like the toy store was always there that I can remember. But I think it would be detrimental to her business. I think some parents would be less apt to go, you know, they have to walk by the gun shop to get there. So that's just pretty clear to me that we need to consider, reconsider our zoning and think of what would be a more appropriate location for a gun store in Healdsburg. So I'm in favor of extending the moratorium.
Councilor Noyokas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in the, solely in the camp of, wow, this is a really frustrating experience with the land use code, as Christine had mentioned, this last speaker. You know, we're talking about making the downtown more accessible to locals and more useful to locals, right? And yet, and so we have this use, which is a proposed use, which is, you know, going to be primarily for locals. And we're having, you know, we're having a very challenging discussion about it. On the other hand, we, in the land use code, we have some stipulations that say that uses like secondhand stores, so for instance, favorites, is prohibited on the plaza. Literally, favorites could not exist on the plaza. That to me is maddening, and I, I'm okay with doing it, with going ahead with this, with this moratorium to focus on this particular question, about this particular land use, if we can have a serious conversation about land use codes in our goal setting and include that as one of our, as one of our topics for the coming year. I mean, even if it's just a question of, you know, look, okay, let's, let's, let's plan for that, you know, set the schedule up so we can have that conversation, because it is a big conversation. You start talking about questions of this particular land use here, you're going to start talking about this particular land use there, and now we're getting all the way up to the general plan. That's a big, huge conversation, and it's not easy. So it's not as, you know, it's not as easy as one might think, just do a refresher on the land use codes, right? So it's a big, huge question, but it's a question that needs to be had. So I'm in, and I have a lot more things to say about all this, and I think we can get into that for the second round. As far as this particular question, I'm okay with that, with the 45 days, as long as we're going to keep our eye on the bigger picture, which is a serious review of existing land use codes.
Thank you, Councilor Noyokas. Vice Mayor Hagley?
I agree. This has been a conundrum type of thing to consider sitting up here because you want to make the right decision for the city of Healdsburg. You hear the passionate comments on either side that are, you know, cannot be dismissed. However, for me, at the end of the day, I really get concerned with looking for ways to prevent businesses from coming to Healdsburg. And I feel like that's what this kind of feels like. We just went through a year of HTID renewal discussions about enough with the tourist-serving businesses. We need more diversity. We have all our eggs in one basket. We pass a, you know, we were asked to, you know, address the issue about an over-concentration of a particular use related to tasting rooms. We did that. We now change it from wine tasting to tasting rooms with different categories underneath. The side effect of that is that space that, I mean, we're talking about a particular space here next to the Raven. That space was a real estate office, and it sat empty for a year. That means nobody's come in there to lease that. This is the first tenant that's come in there. And I understand there's been other tenants looking at it, whether it's the fabric store. But at the end of the day, we're not in the leasing business. It's not our job to place tenants in different buildings. And so this has been my struggle since this came up because I absolutely see the concerns that I hear from the public about this particular location next to a toy store. And then I ask the question, what if the gun store was there, and the toy store was vacant, and the toy store wanted to go in there? Would we say, whoa, whoa, toy store, you can't go in next to a gun shop? And I get concerned, where does that stop? So for me, this is a tough one, and I, I look at, we are an ag town. Ag towns have guns. I feel like, are we going to pretend we're an ag town and look like an ag town? I mean, this is something that is clearly not focused on the tourists. This is something that's focused on the people that live in and around this area, which is the type of businesses that we want to promote. Now, would I prefer a different business go in there? Probably. But that's not my call. That's, to me, is more the property owner. And so I look at, right now, this is a use that's permitted. I ask the questions related to safety and very legitimate concerns I heard from the public, and I'm satisfied with the answers that I heard. I didn't get a huge sense of concern from our police chief or our fire chief. And at the end of the day, the customers for gun shops are, I mean, they're, this is the most, one of the most highly regulated industries. I mean, you can't get much more of an upstanding citizen than somebody that's actually going in to put their thumbprint down to buy a gun. So I, you could put me in the, I think this is an interesting discussion to continue to have, maybe in the goal setting and down the road. But for this particular case, I, I don't like changing the rules once the game has started.
So I'm understanding you're not for the extending it. Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's talk about congruencies, okay? So I own a home on 801 Porton Lane. I'd love to rent a room out because my mortgage is really high, and I'm doing this job part-time and teaching part-time. City of Healdsburg tells me I can't rent a room out unless I rent it for more than 30 days. I'm talking about doing vacation rentals, okay? So many times, there are ways that our city tells us what we can or cannot do with property use. It's not just an isolated case of a gun shop. Gun shop flags me because it does have a lot of connotations. You call it a sporting goods store, and you start talking about, you know, different things, and I heard that tonight. I have no problem with a city council in a small town that is evolving in identity as well as economic base to have discussions around safety and to look at the national landscape with guns. And I really support education, but I don't know if presence means education. And I only say that because, just because you have something available doesn't mean that it's going to educate in the right way. And so I would argue for waiting a bit of time and getting some experience and some knowledge. And also, I would add more information from the public. I understand we want to go planning staff, and we want to give them time. And certainly, the applicant, I want to talk to you directly because I'm hearing everything different from, I just, I keep hearing different things about what you actually want. And I talked to the leasing agent. The reason it is expensive in Healdsburg to rent a building is because we have a competitive market right now, and so places like Fabrications, places like One World, places that have to get moved because restaurants want to come in. The rents go up because other people have more money to come in, okay? So this whole idea of the real estate office being empty so long, it's, ask Nick Abbott how much it's renting for. I've talked to him a few times. Why aren't people in hotel rooms? Find out how much they cost in this town. It's about price. So, I mean, people just set a price, and they don't go down from it. So I think the hard part I have with all of it is there's so many layers, and I think we need the time. And I have no problem adopting an urgency ordinance to extend this time. I hope it won't take more than three months because I don't think it's just about this applicant's need. I think it's about the question of what we want downtown. And I don't think calling it a gun shop is just a flag, and they're saying it's right next to a toy store. And then everyone's like, what? How could that be? The bookends was a good analogy for that. The theater and a toy store with a gun shop in the middle of it. Then you call it a training center, you call it a sporting goods store, you call it the locals to be able to get their fishing poles. Then you start creating a different dynamic. So I need more time as a person that does get to make the decision on zoning because I am elected, and that's what my constituents want me to do, that's why I'm on the council, to make judgment. And so I have no problem at all, as a council member, helping make ordinances to help us plan better so we do increase safety sometimes, or increase viability of a business, or the viability of livability actually in town. So that's why I'm here. So I need more time, and I want my staff to have more time, and I want the applicant to have more time to inform us and to help us understand things because I don't feel like it's, it's clear to me what exactly is going to happen in the building, and I would like to know more. So hang on, just, yeah, just a second, please. And so I would support the urgency ordinance extending it, and so at that level, I support going for that.
Okay, I'd like to offer an interim urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg extending, by title only, I would like to offer an interim urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg extending for a period of 10 months and 15 days, a temporary moratorium on retail establishments selling firearms.
Second. Okay. We're now doing a roll call vote. Councilor McGold?
Yes.
Councilor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilor Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Nope.
Mayor Mansell? Okay, now we move on to some kind of direction to staff, and some of us have already been doing that. So it looks to me like Councilor McCaffrey is ready to go.
Yeah, I think that the applicant had some really interesting thoughts there. And, you know, I think you're, us all talking about a gun shop, a firearms store, you know, it sounds kind of ominous. But when you talk about a sporting goods store, and you talk about something like that, you know, I could see that space, or a space in the, in the commercial downtown district, maybe, maybe, and, you know, obviously, I want to bounce this off all y'all, but maybe there's some sort of a thing, kind of like we have with wine stores, where a certain percentage of your sales have to be, you know, related to wine in order for it to be considered a wine store, where, like a Big Five, like a outdoor pro shop, like a Cabela's, yeah, there's a corner that has firearms and stuff, but for the most part, it's clothing, it's accessories, it's things that people use, like the sporting goods store that was around the corner, or the multiple ones around the corner, or the hardware stores and general stores that are typically out in the hinterlands. Maybe there's some kind of a ordinance that would say that, okay, you can't have it defined as, as a store that only sells firearms. Maybe there's some portion of it that can be, but, I don't know, it just makes it a lot more rounded. And I think something like that, to Vice Mayor Hagley's point, is something that the locals could totally use. And, you know, right now, there's not a lot of choice for that kind of thing unless you have to drive a long ways. And I actually see that as a viable business and a viable, in that size of space. But, you know, I don't want to get too specific about the space because what I'm talking about is the commercial downtown district in general. I can see a store like that, and I'm okay with that. So I'd just like to throw that out there. And I also agree with a lot of the things that have been said about the fact that stores that sell firearms and ammunition are regulated by state and federal authorities. And there's a lot of layers of security on that, and I recognize that. And I also, I know that our, there's a list of other things that cities in California have adopted that have been proven through the court that could add even additional layers of security on something like that, if we were to think about that. And so I too, like the mayor, would like to have more time to kind of figure this out and do some research. But at the same time, I don't want to slow-play it, you know, and take the 10 months and 15 days. I think that we need to, we need to be diligent about this. And so, yeah, I'm just yakking and yakking, so.
Well, I have to say that I think this discussion of a sporting goods store sounds like a bit of a red herring because that wasn't the proposal that I ever heard in these, in this chambers. It was for a gun store. So if, if the staff is looking for direction just to take the temperature of the council, I'm not in favor of gun stores being permitted in the central business district. And I'm pretty much thinking I'm not in favor of the commercial service district either. I should think that in the industrial district would be the most appropriate. There's plenty of space there and less possibility that it's going to have a conflict with the residential area or an established commercial use that wouldn't particularly want to have a gun shop as a neighbor. So my initial reaction is to look at zoning the industrial use with a CUP. It would be what I would think I would be most in favor of at this point.
Councilor Noyokas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, right, I would like to get into a little bit more of that because I just wanted to focus on the yes or no for the 45-day. I want to get more into the, or the moratorium, more into the nuances here. You know, so this is a, this is, yet again, not one of those black or white issues. It's not one of those either-or issues. You could probably argue this is a past versus present issue. A lot of people talk about the passive Healdsburg and a lot of conflicts between the past and the present. But I do think it's, it's a, it's an opportunity for us to learn from each other and have a dialogue. And I think this, that's, I think, probably I should have said that in my early remarks, that I think that, that's, I think mostly what I, the importance of this, of this moratorium is for us to step back, have a dialogue about these, about these sensitive issues that have only become more sensitive in the past few years, right? So, you know, I look at, I look at firearms, sure, they're guns. I think there's a lot of people who would look at something that has a trigger and a barrel and shoots bullets as a gun. But there are guns, and there are guns. There are handguns, and there are rifles, and there are shotguns, right? I actually have had a hunting license, and I've owned a shotgun, actually, I've used one when I first moved out here to protect my chicken flock, my chicken herd, from a predating raccoon. So I, I know the use of a, of a firsthand, the use of a gun as a tool, as an agricultural technology tool, right? So I get that, and I'm sensitive to those arguments. You know, you look at raccoons, you look at wild pig, you can't, there's very few ways to kill a 200-pound pig. So, you know, and they are, they're invasive species, just like Scotch broom is, right? So what tools do you use to take care of that, right? So I'm sensitive to that. You know, on the other hand, I think that there's, you know, there's a lot of sensitivity about the violence aspect and how guns can be used as a tool to inflict harm on another human being, and that, that doesn't, doesn't appeal to me at all. So if it were up to me, I would say like, yeah, let's, I know that there, so I did a lot of research on the whole, on the regulation. I mentioned that I had a chat with Mr. Bjorkqvist, who owns Strike Creek Firearms. So I got a lot of background information. I'm sure we'll get more of that from the staff as we go forward. But one of the things that was, that came up is that there are actually two different classes of firearms. There's, there's classes that, if, as a hunter, with a hunter's, with a hunter license, hunting license, and the, the safety regulations that go along with getting a hunting license, you have the, you have the ability to buy certain classes of guns. You can guess which ones, rifles, shotguns, that kind of, I don't know the details, but that's kind of... that's kind of, there's that class and then there's the handgun, kind of weapon that's primarily, not all, but, you know, intended for use against humans. So, if it were up to me, I'd like, I'd make a distinction, but I'm told that we can't, that there's no, you either allow guns or you don't. So, there's that. I would, I'm in favor of, I like the idea of a secondary use. I think that's kind of what you're getting at, Rashawn, Mr. Councilman McCaffrey was, you know, can we think, can we look at a conditional use that says in the downtown, in the CD downtown commercial district, guns can be a secondary use? In other words, as part of a sporting goods store, an outdoor recreation sporting goods store, I think that I'd be fine with that. And in fact, you could probably argue that having firearms as a component of that store would make that, would make that business more economically viable. So, then if that's the case and you, all of a sudden, you might even have something like a Big Five, you know, in town, that'd be great for everybody. You know, so I'm in favor of exploring that. I'm in favor of, on the other hand, I'm in favor of opening up industrial because I do agree that industrial really does have a lot of opportunities for, if you want to have a primary use for a weapons, you know, a gun shop, industrial would be a great spot. And in fact, you know, really four blocks away from the current proposal is an industrial spot, right here, is industrial, right? So, there's all kinds of opportunities, I think, for industrial to have a really good, and frankly, potentially even a much more economically viable location for, you know, because industrial is generally cheaper in rent, so you don't, there's not as much, right? There's not as much rent overhead involved. So, I'm in favor of opening up industrial as, you know, kind of a way to balance out the, any sort of restrictions that we would make in the commercial downtown. What else do I have to say? Sorry. One. So, yeah, so I think what comes onto is I'm looking for a CUP. Oh, yes, and finally, the other thing I wanted to say is, as part of the state regulations, they require, they stipulate that the applicant needs to adhere to any local police jurisdictional licensing requirements. So, for instance, in the county, the sheriff has very specific regulations that they would like to see that enforced, that are unique to the county and incorporated county area. I look at the city, I think, you know, there's probably some room here for, and we have examples from the cities, I think there's probably room here to go to the chief and say, look, what security concerns do you have that are unique to Heelsburg? You know, there's a lot of foot traffic. I, the concept of adjusting this because we might scare away tourists doesn't fly with me. I think it's much more of a question of focusing on, you know, the pedestrian aspect and parking and things like this. So, I would say like, intent as part of the CUP, ask the police chief for his input on security licensing that he'd like to see as part of the CUP. So, I think with that. Oh, and also I think, well, I guess there's one more thing, which is the security of locking, I think there's some, there are some rules about locking up weapons and ammunition in the safe overnight to prevent, as one of those mitigations against theft that aren't specifically called out in existing laws that I think would be useful. So, those are the kinds of things that I'd like to see.
Thank you, Councilman Manayokas. Vice Mayor Hagley?
Okay. So, first of all, what I like about our council is I can vote in a minority and we can still have a great discussion. So, like I said before, this was a very challenging topic and you see both sides and, you know, the comments and some of the recommendations for amendments to the land use code, actually I don't think are bad. And while I, from a fairness standpoint, as I stated before, I don't like changing the rules midstream. However, now that they've been changed, I'm happy to engage in the discussion and contribute to it in hopefully a positive manner. Couple of the comments, I think it's interesting. Overall, I feel we really need to be careful about trying to micromanage particular uses because we want to encourage businesses to come to Heelsburg and be creative and come up with something that maybe we haven't thought of. This particular use, just because it happens to be around guns, triggers a lot of feelings, positive, negative, indifferent, whatever. And so, there's intrigue with the, you know, having a gun shop downtown and focus more on, okay, but they also sell other things, you know, because that was kind of the thing that I struggled with. Okay, forget this location next to the toy store, but say, one of the wineries on North Street across from Lamar's Hotel decided to move on. And now there's one spot that's not going to be for taste rooms. Okay, what does the gun shop look like? And what I really struggled with was some related to the questions I had with you was the conflict between state law and federal law on, you know, the restrictions, you can't see the products from the street. Now, having little kids, it's not such a bad thing, but from a pedestrian, we want a walkable town, we want people to stroll around town, we want inviting storefronts. So, I think having some focus and, you know, maybe that's included in the updated design guidelines, some language related to that for these particular uses because the example I gave to people in conversations is, forget it's a gun store, but what if noble folk just had, you know, tinted windows and bars? We wouldn't like that either. So, I think there's some considerations where you take it out of the gun aspect. Expanding to the industrial districts, CUP, CS districts, CUP, I'm fine with those. I think the overriding comment that I'll have is just, I want to be careful that we don't just zero in too narrow that we regulate away any potential tenants that might want to come to Heelsburg. And that's always my concern, is we want people to come to us with fresh ideas that we haven't thought of, you know, so that we aren't just tasting rooms and art galleries and, I mean, all great things, but it is nice to have a little spice in there of something that kind of jolts you a little bit. And so, I think that keeps us a small town. Why are you laughing?
I'm just being human. I'm just being human.
So, those are, those are kind of my thoughts. I look forward to the comments back from staff and I look forward to engaging in the conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, once again, I'll just go back to what we're actually tasked to do and going to try to stay there. So, yeah, so I like the idea of dialogue and I definitely wish I could talk to the people that want to put in the shop directly and I've never been able to do that. So, I can't get it out of the gun aspect. I can't because it's a gun shop that was proposed and that's all I've heard. So, until it says something other than the gun, it will continue to be in the gun aspect. Wine tasting room numbers, hotels, diversity of retail, the downtown core, compatibility, design guidelines. We've been trying as a council to look at how we can maintain and not just, you know, put out big spreads about who we are through the Chronicle yesterday that tells us about these beautiful people that cook for us and, you know, wineries and, and this is in the Chronicle yesterday, you know, we see our inns, all this money is being spent to market downtown Heelsburg and the Heelsburg area so we can heavenly hideaways, frolicking and foraging in food lovers paradise, HTID tax at work, maybe. Maybe it's just people that really want to talk about Heelsburg. And I think that there's lots to talk about in Heelsburg. And I think that when you bring up guns, people want to talk about it because they're concerned at the national level. And I know what the Second Amendment says. I've had kids debated for a lot of years in my classes. I understand what rights are. I also know what makes sense in a day-to-day basis in a small town that wants to maintain an essence of small-town flavor. Now, what is the flavor? Apparently, it's wine. Apparently, it's restaurants. And apparently, it's small-town love and support and, you know, we just heard from our police chief, we've got a safe place here. So, we hear about a gun shop that wants to get sandwiched between a movie theater and a toy store. And some of us that raised our children here, it made our eyebrows raise because we couldn't believe the placement. So, I guess what I'm asking is for the staff to look at something like, what do we want downtown? What do we want in that special place where we do have pedestrian walking around, where we do have people sometimes walking around with alcohol? I don't know if you've seen them, but I've seen them. And they have necklaces with, you know, glasses and they're walking around. I mean, there's so much alcohol flowing in this town and I do think there's a correlation and that's why I think they have that federal acronym, the Alcohol Fire. Anyway, so I do think there's connections and I do think that safety is an issue. So, I don't mind telling staff, I'm not interested in gun sales in the commercial district. I don't, I don't want that. I don't have any problem as an elected member of this council to say that I don't want to go forward without more public comment. I don't think that anyone should be making this decision without public comment. And so, we heard some tonight. I don't think everybody that knows about it came tonight and so I think there needs to be a process. It's a very special situation. We're dealing with guns and I do think guns are different. They're different from anything else you can sell right now because of everything that's happened. As far as being an agricultural community, there's plenty of places for people to buy guns. I'm just going to leave that. Dramatic pause. Now, as far as other things, CUPs, let's explore it. It's been so easy for this council, maybe not this present council, to have CUPs associated to certain buildings that exceed what we have on the books or we didn't have on the books until now, one per block phase, Paul Mott or Gallery. So, I guess my concern would be to just be really wary that we need to look at the options. I'm hoping staff will look at some genuine concerns, but I do think the commercial district is not a good idea. So, check me off on that vote. Allowing them in the CS district with a CUP, maybe. Industrial district, can they sell ammunition in the industrial district? Can they actually sell things in the industrial district? I heard retail isn't possible. So, I'm not sure what that means by industrial district. Maybe I don't understand zoning.
Not as a primary use, but it could be a secondary use.
So, if they did want to do a training center, again, it's getting too specific on this applicant. And so, I actually probably should have lunch with him and just talk to him because he's the only one that's brought forth a gun shop proposal in this magnitude since I've been on council and I want to know more about what his aim is. And then I guess more than anything, I just want the council to know that if we ask our staff to do something, we have to give them adequate time. And I think this is a complex issue. And so, though I am concerned about the applicant, he's very civil and he wants to educate and I think it's really compelling to want to create whatever he wants to create there so that people are safer with guns. I think the use is definitely the issue and compatibility. And so, I just want everyone to stay to that place of, let's let our staff do the job, let's let the community come in and speak on all the different levels that they speak. And I need a process. I don't want the council to make it without a process, so it takes time to do that. So, needing that public vetting, I would like to go forward with looking at CUPs in the CS district as well as industrial district. So, that's my input there. Do we need to do a vote on that, city manager, as far as?
I think we have enough direction. I just talked to the director and I think we can take it from here. Again, to address the public comment, the public will have another opportunity to address this at the planning commission when this goes forward, where there'll be plenty of notice for that and then to get in front of this body at a later date. So, thank you very much, council.
Thank you so much. Once again, I know it's tough, but there's so much going on in terms of the landscape of guns in this country and I appreciate that we had a lot of different points of view and we were civil and could talk about it. All right, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have no old business, so we're going to move to new business. And I believe we have a few items that will be talked about, starting with a purchase of a utility truck and a surplus international water truck.
You'll have to bear with me, I'm usually in bed by this time. This is a late evening for me. Good evening, Mayor Mansell and council members. I'm here tonight before you to offer a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving a contract with the Houston-Galveston Area Council in our local for cooperative purchasing between the city of Heelsburg and Gapfax Incorporated for the purchase of a utility truck and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract in an amount not to exceed $425,224, increasing appropriations in the vehicle service fund by $296,776 and authorizing the surplus of a 1996 international water truck. So, the city operates a sewer system under a state-issued discharge permit that prescribes numerous requirements intended to protect public health and water quality. Failure to meet the waste discharge requirements exposes the city to administrative penalties including fines from the regional water control, quality control board, or third-party lawsuits under the Federal Clean Water Act. Additionally, increasing regulations for the city storm drain system, the MS4 permit, require inspection and cleaning of the city's storm drains. This was additionally, this was additional work not previously required. Just to give you a real quick idea about what the fines entail, the for sewer spills and overflows, it can range between $2 to $10 per gallon spilled and an additional $2 to $10 per gallon not recovered. With spills ranging between 1,000 to 100,000 or more gallons, these fines represent a large financial risk to the city. The city's ability to react quick and contain and collect raw sewage spills helps mitigate these potentially large fines. So, the city owns a utility truck and it assists the city in complying with these regulations. It enhances the effectiveness of the Public Works Department with respect to containing sewer spills when they occur as well as meeting other critical infrastructure maintenance needs. This critical tool is what we are calling tonight, the utility truck. City staff access, city staff's access to this equipment assists the city to prevent sewage spills through routine maintenance inspection of the city's sewer collection system. And should a sewage spill occur, a reliable utility truck will allow the spill to be collected, minimizing the environmental impacts from the raw sewage. So, the, in 2016, excuse me, we purchased a new utility truck called a Gapfax Utility Truck. This utility truck replaced our existing back-hon sewer truck, which was truck number 40 that was purchased in 2002. And due to increased maintenance totaling over $50,000 in the past couple of years, that was the main reason for replacing truck 40 was that it was basically at the end of its useful life. Since receiving the current Gapfax Utility Truck, the city has been operating with two utility trucks in its fleet. And in the years passed, the Public Works Department functioned with only one sewer truck in its fleet. But the redundancy of two trucks in the fleet has improved the city's ability to respond to emergencies and perform planned maintenance. For instance, with two utility trucks, one crew can repair and replace the water surface and a second crew is able to perform a sewer cleaning or lateral blockage simultaneously. Since truck 40 is at the end of its useful life, Public Works recommends the replacement of truck 40 and maintaining two utility trucks in the fleet to increase equipment availability, increase levels of customer service, and reducing the city's liability risk with regulatory requirements. Gapfax is a member of a contracting agency, Houston-Galveston Area Council, otherwise known as HGAC. As proposed, the city would utilize results from a previously competitive bid, which is called piggybacking, for, on an HGAC agreement. HGAC is a national municipal contracting agency that offers these purchasing solutions for products and services that are competitively bid nationally and made available to its member agencies. Piggybacking provisions are allowed for Heelsburg through the Heelsburg Municipal Code and the city of Heelsburg is a member of HGAC. The bid price for the utility truck is $425,224. The approved budget plan to replace an international dump truck in the amount of $128,448 has been postponed and the funds that were going to be used to replace that truck will be used towards the purchase of the new utility truck. An additional $296,776 in budget appropriations is needed for the purchase and the proposed funding source is the vehicle service fund. Each year, the department sets aside funds for vehicle purchases. The department is also proposing to replace a, or surplus, excuse me, an obsolete 1996 international water truck. The estimated resale value for this truck is approximately $25,000. Upon surplus of those, upon the surplus, those proceeds will be returned to the vehicle replacement fund. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this purchase.
Are there any questions or?
Yeah.
Yes. Councilman McCaffrey?
So, this was a, this is something that's needed and it's replacing another keyset equipment or doubling the. equipment or doubling the capacity of the vacuuming of sewage and stuff like that. And was this, was this a planned purchase, or?
No, this was not a planned purchase. What had happened was when we purchased the new Gap Faks truck to replace the old Truck 40, we actually kept Truck 40 in our fleet in order to get the Gap Faks up and running, you know, to iron out any kinks that we may have, make sure it was fully functional before we were ready to let go of Truck 40. And now we're just about at that time of ready, we're being ready to let go of Truck 40, and we've just realized how, how, how good it's been to have two trucks in our fleet.
Yeah, so that kind of just gets to my question of, like, so Public Works is an enterprise fund, you know, we have a vehicle authorization fund for this. I'm just wondering why this isn't on the consent calendar?
So actually, in the past, this would have showed up on the consent calendar. Recent council meetings, council has had some questions about what goes on consent and what doesn't. Based on the amount of this, it was determined that it might be best to put this on consent. But in the past, an item like this would typically show up on consent. This is really an operational need that the Public Works Department has expressed over time. I feel that our role is to provide them the resources they need to be able to perform their duties, assuming there's adequate budgetary resources available. So again, I think trying to adapt to what the wants and needs of the council are, making sure that we're as transparent as possible, that's why this item showed up on new business.
I'm just, I'm just going to make a recommendation off of, you know, this isn't really a question, but it's not really directly related to this item, in that if this was on the consent calendar and we had an issue with it and we pulled it, we would be talking about this an hour and a half ago. And I just want to make that point, that I hope that in the future, things like this can be on the consent calendar, and, you know, if we have an issue with them, we research them independently and take the time to go through and figure out what a vacuum truck is, because now we all get to learn what a vacuum truck is, and we don't have a choice. So that's my only point.
I have no problem with these items being on the agenda if you seem to be spending a little more money, or if there seems to be a shift in a way you wanted, you just had a discovery that you liked to. I have no problem hearing about it, but I do think that being succinct and not asking a lot of questions would help.
If there's no other discussion, I'll offer a resolution.
Excuse me, public comment?
Oh, sure, I will. I just wanted to make sure that there were no other questions. Okay, yeah, let's open it. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment or ask a question about this recommended action? Okay, clearly, the public comment is not there, so I'll close public comment, and forward to, I believe there's a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to offer a resolution of the City Council of the city of Hillsburg approving a contract with the Houston-Galveston Area Council interlocal for cooperative purchasing between the city of Hillsburg and Gap Faks Incorporated for the purchase of a utility truck, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract in an amount not to exceed $425,224, increasing appropriations in the Vehicle Service Fund by $296,776, and authorizing the surplus of a 1996 international water truck.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Or do we do a roll call, pardon me? Roll call.
Councilwoman Gold?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Neocas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda has to do with appointments of different commissions, and just as someone that did some interviewing, I just want to commend our public for coming forth to serve. We had a lot of applications, at least in the group that I was in, the Parks and Rec Commission positions, and we did have an appointment for two applicants to fulfill the three-year terms, and then we had one applicant opening with the departure of Commissioner Kelly. So there were three openings, two for three-year terms, and the other one for the two years, or a little bit more than two years. But I just want to commend our public for showing up and wanting to serve, because on the commissions, it really is helpful to have a diversity of a pool, and I just want to say that before we get started. So I believe I'm going to ask my colleague, Vice Mayor Hagley, to make our recommendations for Parks and Recreation Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as the mayor said, we had a great group of applicants. We had 10 people apply for Parks and Rec, and they represented all segments of the community. We had younger people, older people, people with kids, people that liked to, they used the parks, people that preferred to hike. I mean, we had a whole, a bunch of people. We kind of narrowed it down to a couple of main questions that we focused on, the typical, you know, what made you apply, how do you use the parks, and then, you know, have you been to a Parks and Rec meeting? Some of those were the basic questions. We looked at the overall qualifications and knowledge, as well as looking for a fit on the commission. There was no disagreement on the reappointments of the two existing commissioners, based on the historical knowledge and the perspective that they bring. Each brings a unique perspective and expertise to the commission that I think is valuable to maintain. And so where we did have, you know, when you have the one last spot, that's where we had a little disagreement, not disagreement, but kind of going back and forth, and so we decided to go to a special election. I'm just kidding. And honestly, it came down to two, two mothers with young children that both use the parks, use our Parks and Rec facilities, and it really came down to, like, when Councilmember Neocas and I did the Parks and Rec interviews last time, trying to decide, how do you decide when you have so many great applicants? And one of them had applied last time, and that kind of tipped the scales. So our recommendations to the council are going to be to reappoint Jay Tripathy and Kathy Birdsong, renew them to the full term, and then Lacey Scott, appoint her to the remaining term of Ariel Kelly's seat.
Right, so the procedure is that we make the appointment, and then do we vote now to support that appointment? Okay, I just want to make sure that was the procedure. I just want to check the city clerk. Okay, so we can open this now to the public? If anyone would like to give a public comment on our decisions as two people going out to interview 10 people for commission? Are there any comments? Okay.
A simple motion, if one should close public comment.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment now, and?
I'll move that we appoint, reappoint Jay Tripathy and Kathy Birdsong, and also appoint Lacey Scott.
Second.
For, just for clarity, Lacey Scott will be taking Ms. Kelly's spot.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, clearly passes, okay. The Transportation Advisory Commission, and who would like to speak on the behalf of those two that went out? Councilwoman Gold?
We interviewed two applicants, and we liked them both very much, wish we could have taken both of them. But Ty Schuling was our first choice because he has an extensive professional background in, trying to bring up his resume here because it's pretty impressive, but he's, he basically has worked in transportation and then planning his whole career, and he has a master's degree in planning with his specialty in transportation. I mean, he's just super qualified, so he's going to be our, our recommendation. We would love to have also been able to recommend Louis Bangham, because he offers a unique perspective as being very, very committed to using public transportation. He's like totally about bicycles and buses and, you know, hardly uses a car at all, and I think that that perspective as a, as a user would be very valuable to the commission also, so we would hope that perhaps we'd have an opportunity to appoint him at a future time.
Thank you. So again, opening for public comment on the Transportation Commission recommendation? Okay, clearly, no one is coming forward, so I will close public comment, and we will...
I'll move to appoint Ty Schuling to the Transportation Commission.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of supporting that position?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it clearly passes. So we move on to the appointment of senior advisory, excuse me, senior citizens advisory commissions and commissioners, and we have three applicants.
Well, Madam, I'll jump in and introduce our applicants. I'm, I'm happy to say that, that we had, we didn't have the challenge of having to deny, because I'm really happy about that, because all three of them were very qualified each to their own way, right? So we've had Denise Hunt, who has been on the, well, Denise and Laura Moore both applied for re-upping their, their term. I've worked as the representative to the, to the committee, I work with them regularly, and they're just really solid folks who really care about the community and not just, you know, not just their, that, that slice of senior community, but how the senior community interacts with the rest of the community. And they have lots of good ideas about, about, you know, moving forward and integrating that seniors with the rest of Hillsburg, and really looking at, you're both a very firm advocates of the eight to 80 concept, which is, you know, making that, when you make a community safer for someone who's 80, you're making it safer for someone who's eight. So, you know, so they're very strong applicants, I'm happy to recommend those two. And our third is Mr. Deutsch, Peter Deutsch, who, I guess, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, who is a fairly new convert, who's a fresh face in Hillsburg for a couple of years. I like his, yep, Parkland Farm residence, right? And also a bit of a data guy, so that kind of struck, you know, my, my chord. So, and we're going to be talking about, about open source software and the application of open source methodology to city governance.
So the other, yeah, the other thing we talked about was that one of these positions is due to a, I think somebody resigned from the commission, it's the remainder of a term, and we talked about kind of the, the new person having the longer term, and the person who's been on there the longest having the shortest term, so that we mix it up a little bit, even, you know, so we did kind of have a little bit of a choice, right?
Right.
As far as filling the slot, and so I'm not sure, I'll have to confer with the city clerk about who's been on there the longest, but we kind of want to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I think we wanted to put the new person in the longest and vice versa, right?
Just for clarification, Councilmember McCaffrey, we did have a vacancy due to somebody that moved out of town. However, that person's term ended at the end of the year, so in essence, you have three vacancies with three full terms.
So our job's really easy.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, we got the easy job.
What is your motion then? Does someone like to make a motion?
So we've, we're recommending the, those three, those three applicants to be accepted, so.
Okay, and we're now going to open it to public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment on the appointment of the senior citizens advisory commissioners, all three of them? Okay, no one is coming forward, so I will close public comment, and I'm waiting for a motion.
So I'll move that we appoint Peter Deutsch, Denise Hunt, and Laura Moore to the Senior Advisory Commission.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, clearly passes. Okay, before we just move forward to the last E item here, I just want to check in about commission a little bit, if I might, because it's a new composed, composed council, and it is beginning of the year. I think the commissions are yearning for more connection with us, and I understand we do, we give the appointment, but I just want to call our attention to the fact that even though I know we have liaisons, or we have people that, and I listen to them and I get the minutes, but I feel like, especially as we look forward to just where we're headed with the SDAD and all these different visions, that we really stay in touch, because when we interview our these commission candidates, it feels like we get to know more what's going on in our city, and I think it's a valuable thing, but we do it one time a year, and then if you're not on that commission, and I feel like there's a lot of work being done. So I know we have staff involved, and I know there's different things, and so I would just entertain maybe creating some kind of a way for us to interact more with the commissions. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but I just want to be open to that, because I feel like it gets a little isolated. The other one I'm going to publicly state is that many people feel that the Planning Commission, which has three positions open in June, at least, you know, the tenure's up for three different Planning Commission members, people seem to see that particular commission as being more valuable or powerful. Maybe you don't hear this, but I'm just bringing it up, since it's a discussion and this is the public way you make decisions. So I'm just bringing it up, because as we talk about this two-person-go-out-interview 10 people, three people, two people, and then we come back, and then we stamp it, and then we move forward, it would be nice to have more connection with these commissions. So we met once with the Planning Commission, in fact, if you remember, we met with them over the Designing Guidelines from December 5th. But I would hope the city council would connect more with our commissions, because I think that that's really where you're going to get more of that community input that we need, and I think the commissions benefit, and we benefit, from knowing their issues. So I bring that up, because every time I do the appointment process with two of us going out and meeting, and then we come back and say yay, and then let the people get to work, it feels like they're a little bit isolated from us, and I hear that in the interviews. Maybe you haven't heard that, something to consider. Does anybody have any comments on that? If you don't, it's okay, it's getting late. Just thought I'd mention it.
I would just comment that you're absolutely right in that the Planning Commission has a lot more responsibility in that the Planning Department has a, has a very large and complicated charge within the city, and it tends to be a little bit more kind of front and center when it comes to a lot of the issues around, you know, basically, community development. And my other comment would be is that there's nothing stopping us from going out and talking to Planning Commissioners about things. I mean, I think typically, you know, as a council member, you don't want to show up to a meeting unless you're, you're the liaison, but there's nothing stopping us from listening to those meetings and now watching them on, on television or video if we can.
So...
And meeting with Planning Commissioners about things.
February 1st, we will start streaming...
That's what I was wondering.
Parks and Rec, Planning, Planning Commission, and the TAC.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it's kind of like our prerogative, right? I mean, if we want to go out there, we get all the, we get all the packets and everything sent to us. If you look in here, I mean, there's...
Yeah, I understand I have information. I'm saying discussion and conversation is different than looking at a screen and looking at what was said. So I understand I can make the call, but I would just...
Having coffee with your local Planning Commissioners is always a nice...
Yeah.
...thing to do sometimes, so. But yeah, I totally agree, and I think this is something that would be great for Gold's discussion as well.
Yeah, I was just bringing it up, so we had something to think about for the future.
Madam, if I could, if I could, you know, the senior, so as my, as representative to both the senior and the Transportation, I know that the seniors, the Senior Committee Commission has a liaison with the Transportation, because Transportation is such a big deal for the senior community. And I know that they're going to be coming up with a very, some, some very concrete proposals for us, and I know that the, that Transportation is talking about meeting more often to really kind of up their game on, on addressing, being, being more active in these conversations. I'm happy to have it, to have a, to talk about in our goals, but I'm also, I wonder if, as part of the, I'm just throwing this idea out, as we raised it, as when the senior advise, when the Senior Advisor Commission comes up with their transportation recommendations, that maybe that's an opportunity to have maybe some sort of a roundtable, maybe all three of them? I don't know how the logistics would be, but, but something along those lines, where we, where both parties, both the, the commissions are at the table and kind of having, having a roundtable about these transportation issues. I don't know how that would look.
I think we need to break some paradigms and be comfortable with changing up systems that don't necessarily create the kind of community conversation that we spend money to have sometimes, but we don't always get the, the numbers. So I just hope that the commissions are valued, and I, I agree, I mean, they're definitely good people going into it, I just would like the council to interface a little bit. I agree, we can do it individually, it's time-consuming that way, rather than having more work sessions and having an ability for people to have a public comment period and give the public commentary. Like, tonight, I found people that came up for the, for the public hearing, I hadn't seen some of those people before, and I was really happy to see them here tonight, because obviously, the issue was, you know, up there, but guess what? I'm happy to see new people here, and I'd like to invite more people, because I think that's the wave right now, is to get transparency in government, and to get people to feel comfortable to come to a commission meeting or come to a council meeting. I love February 1st, we're going to be airing everything now, right? Or not everything. The Planning Commission for sure will be video.
PC, TAC, and Parks and Rec. We won't be airing the CHC, because they are running their meeting...
meetings now at the community center, they like that, that format better.
Excellent, okay, that's really great news.
And Senior Advisory, I believe they're still at the senior center for the time being, so once they move over here, we'll be able to do that as well.
Okay, so now moving on to the city selection committee, this is item E, appointments of the city selection committee. So we did receive two letters for various boards and commissions. So the first one I think you probably saw was from our colleague in Roanoke Park, Pam Stafford, mayor of Roanoke Park, would like our support. And then there's the one from Windsor for the other, I guess, wait, let me look, it's the North A Division Executive Board Appointment. So I was wondering if there was any discussion on that or if anybody wanted to make any kind of motion to support either of those or both of them?
They're uncontested, it would appear? And they're both being read up from their previous service?
That's correct.
And I assume they've served honorably?
From what I know.
Okay, so in that case, then I would offer the motion that we direct the mayor to support both of those reappointments.
Okay.
A public hearing?
Okay, yeah, I just want to clarify, so it'd be Pam Stafford, mayor, city Roanoke Park and Mark Mullin, who is a council member in Windsor, were the two different appointments. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment or have any public input on those two? Okay, clearly invited to anyway, here we go. So I'm gonna close public comment and come back for a vote or a motion again and a vote.
Well, I made the motion, so?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it clearly passes. Okay, before we adjourn and the gavel comes down, city manager, what is the next agenda item for our meeting in early February?
So it's gonna be housing will be the focus. We are planning on bringing the CHC forward, an update on the CHC, hope to have the Housing Action Plan as a point of discussion, working to have Housing Land Trust here, but it'll be the focus on housing. This item, we've been trying to get to for a few meetings now and we should have it on then. And then on, we're looking at February twenty-second, having design guidelines on the agenda for council to hopefully adopt or to review and also have the discussion on hotels and hotel CUPs in the downtown area.
So I'm sorry, the first one on the twenty-second was what, at Guidelines?
No, February fifth.
No, but February twenty-second, I got?
February twenty-second is gonna be Design Guidelines.
Design Guidelines, okay, Design Guidelines, sorry. Okay, so that sounds good.
Twentieth, I'm sorry, it's February twentieth, today's the twenty-second.
February twentieth, no problem. Okay, I just love knowing what's next and I love the housing focus on the second of February. Thank you so much, city manager.
Then as a reminder, we have our meeting on Feb, February, January twenty-ninth on the Community Benefit Grants.
The Community Benefit Grants will be looked at on the twenty-ninth, the twenty-sixth. Okay, let's get our dates, I'm sorry, I should be looking at a calendar. City clerk, is it the twenty-sixth, Monday, the twenty-ninth? The twenty-ninth, Monday, will be, we will convene a week from today?
Correct.
In these chambers at six PM to look at Community Benefit Grants.
Five o'clock at the CDC.
At five o'clock at the CUC, okay. CCD, CDC, Community Development Center, okay. All right, so with that in mind, what a hearty meeting it was, full of love and support for the community, here we go. So I now adjourn the meeting of January twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Right?